Good evening, welcome to the special town council meeting of Thursday, June 27, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Roll call, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Absent.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Manna?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Do have a forum. At this time, we entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the six-year capital plan presentation. All in favor? Post unanimous all present. Turn this over to the town manager, Mr. Ron Sanangelo, for the six-year capital plan presentation. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for all those who were attending. This meeting was posted in the Southbridge newspaper. It was posted on June 13th to make sure that in fact we do live up to the requirement of 14 days. I want to start just a little bit about talking about the capital budget. It's a six-year capital budget plan from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2025. And this plan is utilized by the town to look at long-term expenditures that the town would make in all the different various departments of the town. The funding for this plan comes from a number of different sources. It comes generally from free cash, it comes from operating budget, it comes from the revolving fund, the enterprise retained earnings, and enterprise borrowing. Those are the general sources that eventually will be used if town council decides to adapt a specific capital plan. And tonight, you'll see when we move past the actual plan, there will be a discussion on the specific capital budget for fiscal year 2020. The way this process works is that I request, put in a request to all of the town department heads to give me their fiscal year capital plan. They, what they essentially do is take last year's six-year plan, the prior year is deleted, they add in things that did not get financed or funded from the year before somewhere in the new six-year capital plan. Some things, for instance, when 1990, 1919 ended, there were some items that didn't get funded, so they may have been moved into 2020 or 2021. It's an opportunity for the department heads to reexamine their needs, to make sure that they have a good solid understanding of how they're going to move forward into the future. It's also used by our rating agencies for credit purposes. They want to know that we actually have a plan for the future and how we're going to move forward in terms of infrastructure. So organizations like Moody's actually want to see that plan and see that in fact the town does have a good financial future and a real process to move forward. Those of you who have picked up the plan and the town council have looked at it, it's a pretty thick plan because it does cover the full six years. The important part of this right now is this year's, what they call the capital plan. It's the current year plan, and you're going to hear a lot of discussion about that when we formally get into tonight's agenda. This capital plan, the actual capital plan, was brought to the General Government Committee for consideration, and you'll see what's been recommended as we go through the process. I'm not going to go through all of the items in this capital plan, would be here forever, but I do want to outline some of the issues being addressed in the fiscal 2020 plan. I'm just going to go forward with just the, the items that are being done from out of free cash. So in the fire department, we got stair replacement for $7,998 administration vehicle, $58,692. Police department purchase of two police vehicles, $90,000. Portable radios, $30,000. Bulletproof vests for auxiliary officers, $16,000. Community van, $35,000. IT, DPW, and town hall windows, 2010 computer replacements, $19,000. Library gutters, down courts, and on the west side of building, $90,000. Recreation, replace Henry playground equipment, $40,000. Community center roof and gutter repairs, $85,000. DPW replaced four dump truck, $75,000. Replace four dump sander plow, $225,000. Storm drainage, $175,000. Town hall engineering for window replacement, $30,000. Town hall and economic development improvements, $10,000. Carpet replacement, $12,245. Fires, for the school department, fire and security alarms, security cameras and key cards, $30,568. Improvement to parking lots, $39,000. IT upgrades additional technology equipment, $129,000. Lease two vehicles, $43,432. Replace wheelchair van, $58,000. Fire alarm systems at CSS and ERS, $12,500. That's $1,311,435,000. That's the allocation just from free cash. But there's also, like I said, funds that come out of revolving fund, out of the operating budget, enterprise borrowing. But I wanted to give you a feel for the kind of things that the town funds, and it's really designed to do a couple of things. One is to protect the long-term infrastructure of the town, which is critical. We want to make sure our buildings are maintained, so we use money to do that. Equipment is always a big, big item. You're seeing the, the police cars being replaced, the fire vehicle being replaced, and DPW to make sure we have snow plows to make sure roads are plowed in the wintertime. So these are the general uses for the plan. These are all scrutinized by myself and the finance director. Before we move forward with every department head, we make them justify this. And you will also know that this body, the town council, in particular the General Government Subcommittee, has reviewed all these specific things on the agenda tonight and have moved them forward to a recommendation. They scrutinize the department heads as well and make sure that these are viable purchases and that it makes sense for the long-term benefit of town. With that, this is an open public hearing, so if you have any questions or comments, please come up to the microphone and state your comments, and we'll listen to anyone that has any comments at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. To start off, I have a couple of questions. I haven't seen the six-year capital plan. On the, on the description of items on your very left column, does that include the entire inventory of capital items that the town of Southbridge owns?
No, this is, this is request for new items. There's nothing to do with the actual equipment that's already owned.
So then, it's not a plan. Second question. The other night at the council meeting, the council appropriated approximately almost $30,000 for a much-needed antenna repeaters for globe section of town. Where does that show up on the six-year capital plan?
Mr. Smick, that's a, that's a very good question because I would agree with you that it should have been on the capital plan. In fact, I had that discussion with the fire chief and deputy chief the other day about that. They recently went out and got quotes for this. I guess it's been an issue that they've been concerned with for many years. In recent weeks, they went out and got details as to the cost of addressing those problems. It was not in the capital plan, but it was something both the police chief and the fire chief thought was important to deal with. They got the estimates and then brought it forward, not in the capital plan, but as a transfer into, from, from the regular fund into.
But no matter how you slice it and dice it, it's a capital item.
I would agree with you, sir.
Now, I'm not questioning.
Just a point of information. Town manager stated that was done within recent weeks. I believe that the chiefs had been working on that project for a number of months. So for the record, I believe it was a number of months, not just two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I know, I, I respect your point that it's a capital item. I just want, for the record, that that information, the town manager's not given correct information. It was not two weeks prior, it was several months that they were working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be perfectly clear.
Let's go through the chair, please. Talking back and forth will not happen, okay? So if you'd like to take the floor, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the comments, as I understand it, and I agree with the chair that this has been being worked on for a couple of months, I think the actual dollars, as I'm aware, were more recent in nature, and, and they came up with the dollars to bring forward. It's, you know, obviously, this is something that's been discussed for a long time, but in order to come forward with the actual plan, you have to have the dollars, and I'm told that that's what's been done recently.
Okay. I'm not questioning the need. We have many needs in this town. What the capital plan is, is a way to move forward to address all the issues. Now, to get off the question phase, I have to admit that our charter when it talks about the six-year capital plan, doesn't say a lot. I think it would be reasonable for people to look at it and walk away and say, "Okay, we've got a six-year capital plan, but I don't know how it works, what it's supposed to do." Now, if you look on, online, there's many websites that someone can go to and look at what six-year capital plans are, and I think that's all you have to do is maybe read up to page three and you get an understanding. And what it is, is an aid for council that it's going to take a group effort to establish the inventory of all our capital items. Once you have the inventory, you can sit down and say, "Okay, what's the usable lifespan of this, of X, of item X?" And you plug it in. It's the product or the piece of equipment, the building, it's going to tell you when it's got to be replaced, or you better start looking at it real good. And the final step for council, where you got to find the money. You got to get creative, whether there are grants available. In that whole process for council, you look for those monies, whether it's state or federal grant, whether some of the items could be covered under the CEBG grant. So there's a lot of work to be done, but the main purpose of the six-year CIP is it's a working planning tool for council. Now, once everything's in there, and let's say it's assembled correctly, at the end of the year, there isn't a mad rush anymore from department heads, the town manager, council, because if it was done correctly, the writers are there. Now, it's related to a budget, but it's independent of the budget. It's, again, a pointer for council. Start getting ready, you got to find the money, because this is what we're facing. And I think you all know and will agree, there's a lot of things in this town. On top of, Mr. Chairman, as you well know, soon we'll probably be considering a new fire station. We have an underperforming school. We have a large, large list of capital needs for this town. And I'm just trying to point that it's time that we get to work on those. So, and if you look at, and I attended a general government meeting, I don't know, maybe five, six weeks ago, later on the agenda you'll be voting to approve those expenditures. That is not a capital budget. What it was, was you people were voting to appropriate, appropriate from free cash. We haven't had a capital budget in town for years. And for it to be a budget, this public hearing should have been held once ago. You were supposed to approve whatever the heck it is, the plan, if you want to talk about capital budget, which you don't have, was supposed to be done by the end of May. And here we are. No planning again. That's what we need to do. Now, one of the things that I pulled offline, it's from, I think it's from the Department of Revenue and State, and it's the Municipal Data Management Technical Assistance Bureau, and it's developing a capital improvement plan. Get in three pages, you're going to stop reading, and you realize the way we're doing it, it's not that. We're not going to get there. And there are many others. If anybody would like copies of some of this stuff, I can get it to you. But I would urge when, later on when the agenda writing comes up, to approve the six-year capital plan. I would urge a no vote, and what it does is basically blows up the plan. The town's not in danger. And then what I would do once, you know, the new fiscal year starts, I would start right away and put together a six-year capital plan and the work that's going to be involved, and do it the right way. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smick. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, sir.
Mike Marquetti, 120 Marie Avenue. I just came up here because I thought maybe I could, you know, I'm trying to get an understanding of this capital improvement.
How to hear you, Mike.
I'm trying to get an understanding of capital improvement plans, and some of my questions are just clarifications, really. For example, administration vehicle, $58,692, but in your capital improvement plan, it's listed as $53,692. So it went up $5,000?
So, I can answer that. What happened was, we had the radios that were going into the vehicle itself, so because a typical capital item is $10,000 more, you know, and because it is part of that vehicle and a need for that vehicle, it was just rolled into that. So the, it was a separate line item rolled in together.
Okay. And portable radios, $30,000 in your plan, or $20,000 in your plan, and you've got $30,000 here.
Yep.
In the plan, it was $20,000, and here it's $30,000 tonight. You're voting for $30,000.
Right. If I'm, if I'm understanding you correct, it's $30,000, it was originally $20,000. As I recall, there was a recommendation to take $10,000 from painting the town hall and moving into this line item. That's, that's my recollection of that issue.
Correct. So the further conversation on that at the Subcommittee hearing that Counsel Steves is alluding to, when we discussed, there was a line item for $10,000 for painting the town hall, then another $12,500 for doing, redoing an economic development office. There was much conversation about $10,000 should be sufficient enough to do whatever repairs are in the town hall, including, right, no, and then there's a transfer of that $10,000 to the radios, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
It actually came, correct, it was about painting, but it was from the police department.
Oh, that's right, police department. I knew there was two painted things. So yes, because the other thing was, we took $12,500 from economic development, and that went to the schools for the fire panels at 12:05. So that's why we did that. So there was much conversation about $10,000 being allocated to buildings for painting and, and materials, and so that, that was the thought process behind that.
Okay, a couple more questions here. You have vote to appropriate $386,000 from water retained earnings, and that's coming from the retained earnings fund. And then you have vote to appropriate $350,000 for sewer retained earnings, but according to your budget, to your capital, not budget, your capital project, you're borrowing that money, but it says here it's coming from the earnings. Just a clarification, I'm just looking for a clarification.
Thank you. So I listed off a number of funding sources for capital, for the capital budget. One was free cash, one is operating budget, one was revolving fund, fourth one was enterprise retained earnings, and the fifth one is enterprise borrowing. All of those different sources are used to fund things in the capital budget, so you're correct that in that case, the, the 350 plus the 36 is coming from water retained earnings. The next line, I think you were talking about was for the sewer retained earnings.
Sewer retained earnings, but you're borrowing that money. That's not from earnings, that's borrowing.
I'm sorry, Mike, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, it's listed here as sewer retained earnings, but you're borrowing it, so is it earnings or borrowing?
No, the answer is, Heather's error, but I think the answer is sewer retained earnings is not borrowing, that's from a retained earnings account. Borrowing would be, would be long-term borrowing, it's two separate kind of things, but Heather can address it, but we have a retained earnings account for both sewer and water. It's sort of the surplus from years before, and that's the money that's being used for that particular purchase. That's what retained earnings is. Yep, maybe I'm a little off.
Madam D W Director?
Maybe I can make a clarification. In the capital hearing, we changed it. After reviewing how much retained earnings we had, we decided that we could fund some of the things instead of borrowing to reduce the borrowing costs.
Can I see a copy of that? That's fine, I'm, I'm just trying to make light.
So Mr. Marquetti, just, I, I think a good learning point here is, and to, to Mr. Smick's comment as well, is that you have the plan, and then plans change because different amounts can come in. We have free cash, we have retained earnings that we may want to expand, this water retained earnings, so.
Okay.
The plan is developed earlier in the year, that we anticipate this is where we're going to take it, and as the year develops and your fiscal picture comes in clearer, you're able to tweak it a little bit and move where you're going to expend that money from to make the best decision for the fiscal concerns of the town.
Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, just to, just to add to that also, for you, I think you probably are into this, but to anybody else who's listening also, is that if we have some extra cash in some of these retained earnings accounts, for example, and that means we don't have to go, we don't have to go out to borrow, which means we don't have to pay more, pay more interest on it. So in the long run, if we can spend, and that's honestly one of the reasons why we try to spend free cash down as well, because if we don't have, if we don't have to go out to borrow, we don't have to spend the interest, that means the taxpayers end up paying less in the long run. Although there are some projects that it actually benefits us to borrow for, if they're really big-ticket items.
My, I'm just trying to get a clarification. They both say from earnings, one's from earnings, one's borrowing. That's all. I didn't know what that, why that was that way. And the rest of it is all borrowing. Borrowing for a lot of water and sewer replacement, a lot of that, all of a sudden, has that, has that been building up? I mean, it just seems like there's an awful lot of them. Water problems with the water lines, problem with the sewer?
I think if, if we go back to the conversation we had the other night with the Morris Street sewer line collapse, and that a lot of these systems are old and, and need a replacement that the town has put off for a number of years, and we're now playing catch-up to those, and unfortunately, there's a cost to that, so.
Okay.
That's, that's why we're, we're in that position that we're in.
Okay. Like I said, I'm just trying to get an understanding, thank you very much.
As we all are, Mr. Marquetti, as we all are.
Counsel Adams, do you have anything?
No, I was just going to answer what.
Counsel Manager, did you have something? I know you had your hand up.
You know what, I think I'm going to wait for the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll talk on.
All right, thank you.
All set?
Mr. Smick.
Thank you. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. So I have some concerns that kind of piggyback on the previous speaker before Mr. Marquetti, and that being that I was being, as a member of the General Government Subcommittee, we did discuss the capital spending and the capital plan as it was presented to us a number of weeks ago, which was stated already. However, we did have a meeting originally set up for June 18th with a long agenda, and the last item, number 13, was to discuss the capital plan again, the 21 through 25 capital plan. And that was because of the conversations that we had had during the first meeting, in which the capital plan was quite incomplete. And at that time, I know Chairman Jovan was there, Chairman Daniels, Chairman Adams, Chairman, excuse me, councilors. Anyway, you're all chairman. So during that meeting, there was a lot of discussion of the lack of information, and that, that me, I personally, in looking at previous paperwork that was given to us, it was really just a regurgitation of previous years, put onto another spreadsheet, but with no summaries, no explanations, no real future thought of anything. So having said that, and not being able to have this meeting due to the town hall mishap on June 18th, and now here it is at a hearing, well, it's going to be at the meeting after this hearing closes, I have a lot of concerns, and I feel that it's, it's definitely an incomplete work. I never received anything else in this packet of information for the meeting that should have happened on June 18th. There was no other backup material, there was nothing new. So I had what we had from the very first meeting, and there was no other additional information that was requested and talked about for, I believe that meeting was about three and a half hours. Yeah, five? Okay, yeah, it was like 11 o'clock, it was a really long meeting. Not all just on, obviously, the six-year, five-year plan, but certainly a lot of it was spent on, on all aspects of the budget. So being concerned in that respect, I'm asking this council certainly not to approve what we have before us, because that's not even, it's just not. You can go online, as the previous speaker said, you can see Hubbardston, Barnstable, you can see so many other communities that have capital plans. And it's not just a regurgitation of some plan, an improvement assessment that was done for us back, I believe in 16. I have those documents. You know, we had a capital improvements document that was done that suggested certain buildings and certain things needed to be looked at. But that was three years ago, you can't just keep putting it on and saying that it's the same exact thing without doing some sort of summary or understanding. So I request, as a taxpayer, that we look more at this before we do anything with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just 10 seconds to prove my point. Counselor, Counselor-elect Marquetti was up earlier, raised a lot of points. This is a public hearing for the six-year CIP, not about other agenda items regarding the budget, that's not what it's about. And that leads to part of the confusion of what the six-year CIP is and how you utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in regards to the capital improvement plan presentation, public hearing? Anyone else? One last call. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing. So move. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present? Subcommittee reports, are there any subcommittees? I know we just had a meeting, are there any subcommittees that have reports? Will you allow me to ask this tomorrow?
No.
So we'll forego that? unanimous consent to forego that? Good. Chairman's announcements, I do not have any announcements, I think I spoke plenty on Monday night. Town managers' announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, just too briefly, I sent out a memo to town councils today, we've spent a lot of time trying to put together a step-by-step summary of what occurred as the town hall was closed for a possible loan. That's what you call an speculative scarab. I did notify some good news, and I think the public should know that, because there's a concern about taxpayers having to foot the bill for the days that the town hall was closed. I've discussed this issue repeatedly with the contractor, the general contractor who did the boiler work, and they've agreed to pay all the costs directly to the abatement company that came in, which is top-notch. They're going to pay all of those costs, and are also going to reimburse the town of Southbridge for the cost of the days that we were, the days or the hours that we were closed. I think that's really good news. Secondarily, I just wanted to touch base on something, because I think it's important. In the Southbridge News this week, so it was an article, I think, I want to bring people's attention to it, says, "Southbridge Academy Students Reflect on This Year's Accomplishments." And I think that it's really important that when we see really great news and we hear great things about our school system, that we make sure that the public is aware of that. The Southbridge Academy is, you know, from reading about these students that were actually touched, their lives were actually touched by this academy, were extremely pleased about the support they got from the teachers and the support staff involved in that academy. And they talked about how they were difficult students who really, one student in particular talked about, now he's on the honor roll. So I want to commend the Southbridge School District for their work with the children, for trying to do everything they can to improve this academy. It's nice to actually see students talk directly about it and how it's making a difference in their lives. So when we have good news and we want to share, we need to share it with the public, and I want to thank the school staff that are involved directly in the Southbridge Academy. It's nice to see this article, and I appreciate the fact that they're seeing success. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations swearing in, we have none this evening. Citizens Forum, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the council on any item not on the agenda tonight?
Okay, I think this would be where I want to say what I want to say. So I haven't had the ability to attend many meetings. Oh, sorry, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. I figured I was still in from the last hearing. And I was reviewing some of the previous meetings, including the budget meeting.
attention to it, says, "Southbridge Academy Students Reflect on This Year's Accomplishments." And I think that it's really important that when we see really great news and we hear great things about our school system, that we make sure that the public is aware of that. The Southbridge Academy is, you know, from reading about these students that were actually touched, their lives were actually touched by this academy, were extremely pleased about the support they got from the teachers and the support staff involved in that academy. And they talked about how they were difficult students who really, one student in particular talked about, now he's on the honor roll. So I want to commend the Southbridge School District for their work with the children, for trying to do everything they can to improve this academy. It's nice to actually see students talk directly about it and how it's making a difference in their lives. So when we have good news and we want to share, we need to share it with the public, and I want to thank the school staff that are involved directly in the Southbridge Academy. It's nice to see this article, and I appreciate the fact that they're seeing success. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations swearing in, we haven't done this evening. Citizens Forum, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the council on any item not on the agenda tonight?
Okay, I think this would be where I want to say what I want to say. So I haven't had the ability to attend many meetings, oh, sorry, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place, I figured I was still in from the last hearing. And I was reviewing some of the previous meetings, including the budget meeting. And I know you're gonna vote on capital, but the budget hearing is, the budget meeting is done. And I'm very concerned, because as I looked at the agenda and I saw the vote to adopt the FY 2020 Town of Southbridge General Operating Budget, I was reminded of last year, in which council spent a lot of time working before the budget, on a number of issues in regard to transfers. And I guess I have a question, I'm not sure if I can ask a question, through the chair, perhaps, to the town manager, if he is aware of what policy 14 is.
Is that the, do you, Mr. Chairman, believe that it's the fiscal policy created on the transfers? Is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
I'm very aware of it, yes.
You are. So, that being said, the agenda item said, number 28, from your meeting on May 20th, vote to adopt the FY 2020 Town of Southbridge General Operating Budget, per the attached voting document, in the amount of $54 million. So, let me just pull up for a second. Policy 14, which we spent a great deal of time on, as we said, because we were having issues, the charter is very clear about transfers, and we were having issues of bringing every dime, nickel, whatever, to council. And so policy 14 came about from a lot of discussion and clearance with Steve Meadows, who is our lawyer for Merrick O'Connell, in which we were trying to make it more efficient for our department heads and for the town to run without having to wait for every nickel and dime, $1,000, being approved by council. Charter is very clear, all transfers must be approved by council, especially since there was a transfer that had happened, as we remember, on the forklift, which not only was three $10,000 pots of money to make a $30,000 purchase, but it was also a capital item. And while we had a loose capital item definition, that was another issue that we addressed for months. So it became clear that a capital item, as was talked about tonight, was any item, $10,000 or more, with a life expectancy of at least three years, or more than three years. That's pretty standard in the industry. So what we did as a council, and our citizens members, was to come up with a policy, as we said, to make this town run more efficiently, and that when a department head had perhaps a little bit of extra money in personnel, for instance, but needed to apply it to overtime, or looking for more supplies for $500, and realized they had a little overage in some other area of a line item within their budget, rather than continually coming to council, policy 14 was adopted. Policy 14 did not allow the council to be relinquished of their duties, rather, it was in exercising executive powers bestowed upon the Home Rule Charter, that the Southbridge Town Council puts forth the following budget appropriation policy regarding intra-departmental transfers. So this was in regard to funds being moved around within a department only, within their line items within a department. Some people still didn't agree with that, but we felt that as times have changed, we can't be reactionary, we had to be actionary. Anyway, so, the policy stated that intra-departmental funds, now, we had to include language, according to the lawyer. The language for the vote to adopt the Town of Southbridge General Operating Budget of each new fiscal year shall include the following. Vote to adopt the FY, fill in the blank, 2020, Town of Southbridge General Operating Budget in the amount of, fill in the blank, provided, however, that the town manager may, pursuant to the managerial discretion, reallocation up to the greater of $5,000, or 30% of any of the sums specified, to and from the various line item purposes presented in the town manager's budget report, within any department, without prior approval of the town council. It also goes on to state that language also must be included in the votes taken for the water and sewer enterprise funds budgets. They were not, this language was not included. It also goes on that still, during interdepartmental funds transfers, so between departments, fire, police, DPW, you cannot just say, you've got some money, you're gonna transfer. For, between those, all transfers between departments will go, will have prior authorization or council approval, as according to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter. So, you have a problem July 1st in this town, because after July 1st, no more transfers, unless you've gotten a prior approval by the council. Because the language on something that was worked at, spent money at, is a policy in a policy book that exists here in this town hall, which we created last year to make sure these things wouldn't happen under the jurisdiction of the town manager, did not happen, the language was not inserted, on the town manager's budget vote. And I have a real problem with that, because that's an oversight that should not have happened. And that falls squarely on the shoulders of the town manager. I don't think I have too much else to say, unless, really, you now have to amend your budget votes to correct it, if you so choose, apparently, or department heads, many are sitting out here, which is why I'm looking at them, will have to get prior approval for everything, whether it's $5, $100, $1,000, $5,000. And yet, we have a policy that we paid legal fees for, to make sure it was done right. And that's an oversight that's just, I, it's really, really shocked me. So, thank you for listening to me, and I'm sure that you will handle it in whatever manner you need to handle it, to make sure the town business runs smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely review that policy and make sure it's cured, so that the departments can work efficiently. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to address the council at Citizens Forum? Anyone else? Seeing none. Move on to item 11, vote to reappoint Merrick O'Connell, Attorneys at Law, as Special Municipal Counsel for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was one of the items that was sent back to General Government, and we did not have that meeting due to the closure and other things, I guess, the meeting was canceled. So I am recommending that we make an amendment to this, to appoint them for a 60-day term, so we can further have discussion on this at the General Government meeting, like we were supposed to.
So a motion to amend, is there a second? So the motion is to, there's a motion proposed by Counselor Manor to amend this, that it's effective July 1st, 2019, for a 60-day period, and then have, go back to General Government for further study.
That's what we had discussed up here, and that's what it was decided on.
Is there a second for discussion purposes?
Yeah, I'll second, present discussion.
Okay, discussion. Okay. So, I, Counsel Lazo, just to fill in, so we had a, three firms that we were proposed to be reappointed. Attorney Robert Caprera, who is a general town council, we have special counsel Merrick O'Connell, and we have another law firm that's special counsel for some, some boards.
Talman Costa.
Okay, Talman Costa. Talman Costa, Attorney Caprera, those two firms were moved forward, there was questions as to Merrick O'Connell, specifically not so much, I think, for their work on envi, some environmental law that they're doing, but more as to the labor council and de-mosca and the cost of that firm. And it was proposed that perhaps we go back for further discussion to see about any requests for proposals, to see if there's any other firms out there that, or have a general discussion about labor council as well. I believe the issue, we wanted to get it done beforehand, because we have labor negotiations going on with different unions, that they're party to, that we would need them to continue with, so there was a big host of concerns, so that's why we got kicked back to General Government, and the hold was put on Merrick O'Connell, and like the council stated, there was no ability to have a more detailed discussion.
Just a quick question. How many units has Merrick and O'Connell already engaged with or in process of negotiating with? Man, are they close to settling, or does it look like they will be into it for a while?
So, three, Mr. Chairman, there are three unions in town. DPW, which the contract is essentially finished, there's some minor tweaks, but it's been voted on and approved by town council, it's called a memorandum of understanding. The fire, or, I'm sorry, the police union contract is, for the most part, settled, again, some minor tweaks, the union has to vote on those tweaks, and then it'll be brought forward to the town council, that should happen sometime early July, I would guess, is that's gonna be done. The fire, probably in the middle of it. So in terms of their involvement with the big legal cases, all three of them will be done this year, and we really won't need them for two and a half years going forward. The only legal, the only labor cases they might be involved in are individual kinds of cases, not negotiating a union contract, so. Are they gonna, is it gonna be an impact very much if, you know, we, again, we wouldn't use them for any major cases for another two and a half years?
Outside of the current work, I mean, it's one firm that we're appointing here, as special counsel. So, I mean, we have to be very careful that we move judiciously, because, one, it is a, I can't, we're not gonna discuss publicly, but is, is, they're very involved in litigation and stuff, so. So the recommendation, so the amendment before us is to see if we just amend it, and for 60 days, so that we can, at least as council, talk further about legal council in general. Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to express, I really believe it is worth the discussion to bring it back to General Government and talk about this. It's not like we have never changed attorneys before, we have done that in the past. It's worth a discussion. It's just holding up, just appointing them for 60 days, we'll have a General Government meeting, and then it'll come back up to council. I really believe it is worth a discussion. And it would also give the newer councilors, if they so choose, to go into the town manager's office and actually look at the invoices of the last years from Merrick O'Connell. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So by, last time I voted no on that, to delay it, or postpone it to the General Gov, yet, somehow or another, I understand the asbestos issue, but town business wasn't taken care of last week, what it should have been done. Somehow or another, I was able to set up a planning development meeting last week, but Gen Gov got canceled. Today is Thursday, now we're going on two weeks, two and a half weeks since this was postponed. So, I guess my concern here is, if it was that concerning, why didn't we have a meeting Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday? What's the concern here? So I do have an issue with that. Though, I, I think we do have to have a discussion, my concern is it wasn't, didn't seem to be that important to delay a Gen Gov meeting and not set one up for this week earlier.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Counselor Manor?
I did talk to the Chair of the General Government because of this, and I would ask Counselor Steve's why the, you know, why it was canceled. I was assuming it was because of the asbestos.
The meeting itself was canceled because of the asbestos, because there were, it seemed like, to me, like, there were conflicts with people doing the cops and kids event that day.
Speak into your mic.
Other things going on. And honestly, honestly, it was just other stuff that I was doing over the course of the last week, that I just didn't have time to set up another meeting. I have no problem with doing it, I have no problem discussing it. I was just thinking a second ago, that maybe if we're interested, we could think about whether or not we want to do, to do them for certain things and not for other things, because there are other, other attorneys out there to do various.
Well, that's something that can be discussed.
That would be discussed at that, at that session, exactly. So, I mean, I have no problem with continuing the discussion.
Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I do plan to abstain from the vote, because I won't be working with these people directly, that's up to new council, but I would recommend to council, that as these folks are on board, and we have no complaints with them, to start from scratch with another law firm, I don't think would be very prudent. Just my two cents, thank you.
Counselor Manor?
Again, I really think it would be to the, in the best interest, if we discuss this down at General Government, it's a 60 days, we're just appointing them for 60 days, if it doesn't go through, it doesn't go through, and it just gets continued on, they'll be here for a year. It's not like we're, we're saying no to them right here and right now, we're just extending it 60 days, it'll come back up to council, and, you know, if, if we decide, if it's recommended that we go with another law firm for special counsel, that'll be discussed more up here, and that's voted on up here. If not, then they're, they continue on for a year. So, I think it would be in the best interest for the town and for the new council, the new councilors that are coming on board, so they have the opportunity now to look at the invoices. I, I just want to make sure that there's no conflicts or anything with everything that's been going on, because, I mean, I brought this up a couple of years ago, that we use the attorney way, way too much, in almost everyday business. I looked at it, I, I have invoices, I, I have a spreadsheet, I forwarded that on to Chairman Jovan. I brought, I forwarded it to other councilors a couple of years ago, I can forward it to you if you'd like, but to me, this is a great concern, and it, it, it should be discussed. I'm not saying, let's not vote on this now, and let's get rid of them, let's extend it 60 days. You know, whatever comes up through the Subcommittee, it comes up to council, and then it's voted on then.
Counselors? So is that the thing, Mr. Chair, is that the fault of the attorney, or is that the fault of the individual asking for help or legal advice? That's my concern here, is, well, your point is, and I do believe there needs to be a discussion, I got that, and I think that's for all the attorneys in this town, or all council that we receive. But again, what you're, Counselor, what you're telling me is that it's more of people requesting the help, more so than the actual lawyer.
Actually, if I may.
That's the only way it's gonna go through, that's all I was saying. Are you outside? Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
That is part of it, yes. However, the attorney should also know that he's not the town manager, and perhaps, maybe report to us, the council, that maybe he's getting involved a little too much, and that's just what I want to see. I want to carefully look at things, and I want to have the full discussion, that's all.
I, okay, I'll defer to Counselor Lazo first.
I'm hearing two things here. I'm well aware of whom Merrick and O'Connell is, I've dealt with them as labor lawyers, as the chairman of the school committee, and as a member of the school committee. School committee had same type of problem, as far as the bills just kept getting bigger and bigger, and, you know, you have your busy session when you're doing your negotiations, and then all of a sudden, it falls off. So we did look at pricing, let's check the prices on Merrick and O'Connell, to see if they're fair. You're gonna find that their pricing is as marketable and competitive as any other firm that size that does what they do. The second part I'm hearing here is that this lawyer is called automatically, either by the manager or whoever needs the lawyer. That was the same problem we had in the school district in the early days, and what we did was, you can't use the lawyer without a vote at the school committee, back then, which was when I first became a school committee member, and you had to work together as a board with the superintendent, or in this case, would be the manager. How often do you use the attorney? And who makes that call? The attorney works for the Town of Southbridge, doesn't work for the manager. So I think it's pretty black and white how it works, maybe a little oversight accountability by the council might go a long way on when the manager pushes the button for the attorney. You need the attorneys, I'm not gonna say we don't need them. Cost-wise, I don't have a problem going out and looking at prices, I think we'll find out exactly what I just said. I think what we have to do, along with a lot of other stuff that I see, we've developed some bad habits, let's say, let's correct our bad habits and do diligence on how we deal with attorneys, and I think you'll see all those lawyers, lawyer fees, no matter which lawyer it is, a little common sense goes a long way when it comes to whether you're gonna push that button and call our lawyer.
Counselor Manor?
If I may, Mr. Chair, thank you, I respect everybody's opinion. One of my concerns is a potential conflict, and I just want to ensure that there is no conflict with the special attorney and our town manager, especially when it came time for his contract. There was a lot of talk on that, and I just want to make sure there's no conflict there. And by having a General Government meeting and discussing this down there, I think is, you know, it's, it's to the advantage of the town. Thank you.
Counselors? I just, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, if it's just, you know... If it's just, you know, if it was all three of them, maybe, maybe I'd have the concern, but it just seems to be one, one firm. So, I, I guess my, that's my concern, is that we didn't stop the other two, we didn't reevaluate the other two. Is it that, are they acting as the town manager's lawyer, or is it, you know, I think it's just responsibility of the town council to take a hard look at this, what's going on with all three of them, and then we go from there. But, you know, I, I think we had plenty of time to set up a general government meeting the last two and a half weeks besides that, to, to discuss this. And Counselor, if that's, you talked to the other counselor or the chair of the, of the subcommittee, I got that, and I appreciate that, it just never happened, and to me, that wasn't such a big deal at that point. Thank you.
Counselor Manah?
I totally, I respectfully, not totally, respectfully disagree with you on that with regards to this not being, I think, although it's not urgent, urgent, there is a need. And we are not getting rid of American O'Connell, we're extending them for 60 days. It goes for discussion, which would be, benefit the town as a whole, I believe, to have a discussion on this. And wherever it goes, it goes. If it, you know, if it fails, it comes up here and it fails, and then American O'Connell, they're, they're, they continue on for another year. I mean, I really, I honestly believe that a discussion needs to be had. Now, just because it took two and a half weeks, well, we had a week with the town hall, we had asbestos, no asbestos, asbestos, no asbestos, you know, are we, are we, you know, gonna violate open meeting law? I understand that you had the time, and you got your meeting together. You, you were organized in that way. I, you know, Counselor Steves said that things came up with him. He could have had it on that Thursday night, but with general, I mean, with the cops and kids program going on, there were a lot of people at the cops and kids program, what type of shape would, would they be able to make it to, you know, the, the general government meeting? Who knows what would have happened? So, he made the decision to cancel it. And I questioned him, I'm like, shouldn't we have it? We should have the discussion. I mean, we could vet it out up here.
So-
Continue to vet it out up here, or we could vet it out and, and have a really good discussion on it at a general government meeting.
So, I respect Counselor Manah's opinion on this. I would personally like to see it go back to subcommittee to discuss the special counsel's role in concert with our role as councils. And this is due to an issue that occurred yesterday that I don't want to bring on camera, but we have to have a conversation about the relationship between our counsel and our legal counsel, and how that policy goes forward, just for Counselor Lazlo and the public's concerns when we talked about the reappointment of the other two firms. Capera and Caprera, we've used them for local legal issues. Up until May of 2019 for fiscal year, we spent $19,000 with them. Pretty reasonable. Me, Tellman, Costa, who's doing work on some of the liquor licensing and all that, $19,000. Reasonable. And I get we have a whole host of legal issues. American O'Connell, just for labor counsel and counsel to the town manager's office, $73,000. American O'Connell for landfill, legal counsel, $256,676,000. We have paid American O'Connell over $300,000 this fiscal year. When we're spending that kind of money, I think it's incumbent on us as a counsel to think and delay it at least 60 days, to have a good conversation about the relationship that we have with our legal counsel and how they're used in our town. So, I would fully support Counselor Manah's amendment to go back to general government and have a conversation about this. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Oh, the amendment.
Oh, the amendment, I have to call the amendment. All those in favor of the motion as amended?
No, the amendment.
The amendment, the amendment, I'm sorry. Opposed, the amendment?
One abstention, Mr. Chair.
So, the motion carries. All those in favor of, of the motion as amended, which is to vote to reappoint American O'Connell attorneys at law or special municipal counsel for the term of July 1st, 2019, for 60 days-
August 31st?
Yeah, we'll go August 31st. And to refer the issue to general government for further discussion.
It would be September-
What's that?
It would be September 30th for 60 days.
60 days is, no, it's August 31st.
Oh, oh, okay, August 31st, okay, sorry.
Counselor Lazlo?
Just a quick comment. I don't see a big deal in cutting it down to 60 days. We're not getting rid of Manaric and O'Connell, we're gonna re-identify and provide, maybe, maybe he can provide us with some reason why it's the way it is, why the numbers are blown up, and we'll work on it. There isn't anything in this budget or capital improvement that I don't think could use a little more time and thought to do the best job for the taxpayers of Southbridge. So, for myself, I will be voting yes.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting yes as well. It's just, I think, just not the one firm that we need to discuss. I think it's all of them. I understand the amount of money, but maybe it's the use, like Counselor Lazlo had brought up, of, of the legal counsel, and that's my whole point at this point. Thank you, that's all I got.
And Counselor Adams, that's a point well taken, and I think for this specific motion is to appoint them for the 60-day term, but at general government, we can have that more detailed conversation about our legal counsel.
Understood, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion as amended? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Counselor DePietro abstains. Item 13, vote to approve the six-year capital plan FY 2020 to FY 2025 for capital budget expenditures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Are you confused?
I'll second the discussion.
Huh? What? Okay, go ahead.
I'll second the discussion.
Did I miss something, Counselor Adams?
This has a Mass D O T grant, amount of-
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I had the old one in front of me, I apologize. I did have the new one, I was working on it, yeah, thank you. You stumped me, okay. Item 12, vote to accept the Mass D O T grant, the amount of $106,640 for fuel farm replacement professional services at Southbridge Municipal Airport. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, discussion? Counselor Steves?
Well, I hope that, I, I know we talked a little bit about the fuel farm a couple of days ago, and we put it on hold because we don't have federal money, so can you explain this a little bit farther?
Absolutely. This is not for the construction part of it, this is for the architecture part, the design plan for it, but this is specifically for design, not for construction. What was put on hold the other day was the construction component, because the federal government so far has not approved the grant for us. That's why if you, if you look at the motion, it says at the very end of it, I believe, professional services at Southbridge Municipal Airport, that's the planning part of it.
Okay. In that, in that case then, is, is there a match for this, for us?
The grant, the town has, part of our expenditure was used from free cash that we'd allocated for this already.
We have a, yes.
There's no new money, yes.
Okay, okay. And then in that case then, as far as this, this, this spending goes, have we heard anything more from the federal government about the likelihood of what, whether we'll actually get grant money? Because honestly, if we're not gonna get their grant money, is there a point to doing this?
So, so the answer to that question is that we've already moved forward with the plan, as you may be aware.
Yeah.
The answer is, my understanding from talking to John Henry, is that they're trying to see if the state instead of the federal government will fund this whole program.
Right.
That is an open discussion, and it had, there's no conclusion to that, and I think there's still discussion about seeing if the federal government will still do it, so I think it's an open and fluid issue at this time.
All right, Counselor Dana first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager, then, my, my gut feeling is saying, why authorize the spending now when we don't know if it's coming?
So, the, as I understand this, and John's not here tonight, but I'm gonna do my best, and if, if the airport manager's here, I'll let him answer to it. My understanding, they moved forward with the design of this with the anticipation they were getting federal funding. The Massachusetts part of the federal government approved it and recommended it to the Washington DC office, and so far they've refused it. Either way, this architectural plan will be utilized in the future to do this project, and they're still working on trying to find the full funds for construction. In the discussions that were had, and I believe that the airport commission and the airport manager, was that they felt they were extremely confident that this was gonna be approved all the way, and were shocked that the federal government said they weren't gonna do for it, so, go for it. So, the vendor that we used at the airport is requesting us to continue to move forward, and they're doing everything they can to find funding for this project, and with that, if I, if there's any more information, the airport manager can add to that, but that's as I understand it.
I, I do know, Counselor Dana, if I may, and I know, I'll recognize you next, I did speak to the airport manager real briefly about this before the meeting started, and it was the timing of the fuel farm replacement. I asked, is that really a project that we should go forward with, to your point? And the issue with the, reason that they didn't give the funding was, the bureaucrats in Boston took a look at the pavement that is on the airport and noticed that the pavement needed to be replaced or worked on, and therefore, should you do that first before you do the fuel? So, there's a whole plan in place to do that. So, they want to get fully done with their study and their engineering so that they can go move forward, and they believe that they're gonna be in a better place for next year's funding for this. This was on this year's funding, that ends June 30th, so we're talking, that they'll put them in place for next year's funding. And they actually are doing some paving up at the airport this week. So, it's all a fluid bureaucrat in Washington looking at Google Maps saying, hey, you have some cracks, and, you know, we've talked about pavement plan, and we've talked about the percentage of useful life, correct? Madam DPW, correct, what, what is it called? They do a survey on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the paving condition index, and we were at such a point that we were a little bit too low for them. So, the plans are in place, so they recommend, the airport commission recommends that we do go forward with this, because they're already spending money up there from the state portion of this to get this project done, so we should continue on it. That was my understanding. Thank you. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, when I read this agenda item, vote to accept the grant for fuel farm replacement dash professional services, to me, that's somebody professionally replacing this. So, if we could add professional services for the design, because that's what this money's for, I'd feel more comfortable with that. It's, it's for transparency.
Mr. Airport Manager, is this design only for the professional services? For the $106,000, right? Okay. Counselor Adams?
So, maybe I can, I agree, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counselor Manah, because the, the numbers I received here was, the state funds is 106, 640. We put in 26, 660, for a total of $133,300 for engineering-only grant, so we matched 20% of that, so.
Okay.
I, I agree with it, because it is for the engineering stuff, or the engineer work.
So, you want to add professional services, engineering at the, at the Southbridge?
For design only.
And, professional services, design, engineering, same thing, right? Design slash engineer, would you be okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
As long as design's in there, yeah.
All right, so there's a second. Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, unanimous? Just further discussion on the motion as amended? See, not all those in favor of the motion as amended? Thank you, unanimous, all present. Vote to approve a transfer of $2,400 from Town Council Reserve, number 1 dot 132 dot 5781 to Town Prior Year Unpaid Bill, number 3 dot 589 dot 5899 dot 133 dot 9095, to cover the prior year costs due to Hammond Communications Corporation for the police and fire departments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, this was a holdover from last week's meeting with the backup material that was sent out to all counselors? Is there any questions on that? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a question, two questions. This doesn't cover FY, this doesn't cover this year, does it? So, should we be getting, receiving the bill here soon for that, or?
We already pay it.
We already pay it? I'm not even sure if, okay.
Good evening, through the chairman, yes, we've already paid this year's bill.
Thank you. Our second question is, how much will that leave us in the reserve?
Not much.
For three days?
If I could, through the chair, it would leave us $11,186 after this transfer.
Thank you, ma'am. So, ahead, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manah?
Thank you. I want to thank those who, you know, we got, we got the information that we requested. Thank you very much for that. And I, I know this isn't anything against the police or the fire department, but I'm kind of disappointed to see the P O date as May 20th, 2019. I would have liked to have seen the original invoices from them, because, I mean, if we're paying for something from 2014, and the P O date says 2019, you know, it just doesn't sit well with me, because, I don't know, it, it just doesn't sit well with me, that's all. It's nothing against the fire department or the police department, like I said, I guess it's, you know, the communications. And then a second question comes up, are there any other communication companies out there that deal with this type of stuff? And if there are, have we gotten any quotes from them?
So, to answer your question, yes, there are other communications companies out there. These, these two vendors that we used, they did their, their evaluation and engineering for our town free for us, under a gentleman's agreement. They were able to give us that information. And other towns, this, the other companies could have possibly charged us a great deal of money to do the engineering. There's a lot of radio work, site radio work that needs to be done just to do the testing, but yeah, there are other, other radio companies, these, this, these two companies are the companies that are also helping, helping us with the central dispatch project also.
Well, the bookkeeping practices, they just don't sit well with me when we have a May 20th, 2019 P O date for a bill from 2014. That just doesn't sit well with me. It's not your fault.
I agree.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe this, this is good for 10 years, right? From 2012 to 2022, the agreement?
Yeah.
So, we still have about three more years left on this. Let's all ahead.
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
No, I didn't know if you had something, you all set?
If you, this MOU, and Finance Director just pointed out, this MOU is good for 10 years, and it was signed-
Yeah, that's what Counselor Adams was saying.
So, you have, okay, so I missed all that.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion?
Chief?
Chief.
Quick question.
Chief.
Which chief?
Chief Harmandon. Whoever, whoever can answer it. I guess, a quick question, just to clarify, is Hamden the one who actually owns the towers that we're using, or do they, do they just have the, the other devices that are on the towers that we're using their services?
Hamden Communication owns the tower and the property. The equipment that's inside the, the container at the base is ours.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? See, no? Roll call, man?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazlo?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present. Thank you, chiefs, for getting it together, appreciate it. And Karen, thank you. Item 14, vote to approve the six-year capital plan FY 2020 to FY 2025 for capital budget expenditures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Snick?
Won't take long.
Say your name again for the record, for the formalities of the-
Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. On, just for the sake of clarity, on item 14 on the agenda item, it says vote to approve six-year capital plan FY 2020 to FY 2025 for capital budget expenditures. If, I'm going to ask if you could amend the agenda item, and after FY 2025, drop the language for capital budget expenditures. Has nothing to do with it. Separate it. It's just going to make it clearer. Thank you.
Okay, so, I would go one step further. It should be the six-year capital improvement plan because that's the way it should be under the budget, so, I mean, under the charter. So, is there a motion to amend that as?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion on that? So, the amendment would be vote to approve the six-year capital improvement plan FY 2020 to FY 2025. That's the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
I do have some.
Go ahead.
I do have some discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay.
If that's okay.
On the amendment or on the budget itself?
No, on the budget itself.
No, so this is just to amend it to read that it's approved the six-year, the amendment only, that's all we're voting on.
Okay, okay.
So, all those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Okay, now, discussion on the approval of the six-year capital improvement plan as amendment. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I too do have some concerns with the way this was presented to us, what was discussed at the general government meeting, and some of the things that weren't given to us. And one of them being the, or should I wait till we get to agenda item number 15?
No, because this is vote to approve the plan, so if you're talking about the plan itself?
Yeah.
The approval of the plan?
Okay, so I don't support, I don't vote to approve the plan because basically it isn't really a plan. It's, and I think I mentioned this in general government, it was, you know, I asked, was this just copied and pasted, you know, into, like, from the fiscal management study that we had? I don't think there was a lot of effort put into this, and I think it, you know, we should have had more discussion on it. I think it should have been brought to us way before it was too. Thank you.
Councilor Steves?
Um, yeah, just to reiterate a little bit, for those of you who are watching, we did, what we, when we had the gen gov meeting on the capital issues, what we ended up discussing for probably three hours about, or thereabouts, just that one item, was the capitals, the free cash capital spending, which is agenda item number 15, the next one up. What we didn't even get to the subsequent years beyond fiscal 2020. We have not discussed this. It is, it is just a spreadsheet. I mean, this is everywhere, and it doesn't really say a whole lot. So, I think we do need a lot more discussion on this particular issue. In itself, probably be a couple of hours minimum. It needs a lot more details. We do need to know what the rationale for a whole bunch of these things are, and, yeah, I don't see this going anywhere tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out, just for purposes of clarity, a couple of years ago, when this plan, the basic outline of this plan was developed, I was looking for the capital improvement plan that was a high-quality product. In fact, the reason I have this plan and this before is because I talked to the Massachusetts State Department of Revenue for the experts so-called in capital improvement plans, and asked them if they could tell me towns that had exceptional capital improvement plans that they would recommend to me so that I could use it as a template for Southbridge. This was the first, foremost, in terms of them writing a high-quality capital improvement plan in the state, they referred me to, and I believe the town is Manchester. I used their template to create our plan. It looks very much like theirs. I mean, it's almost identical. The department heads who developed this plan, the department has essentially put in the information for each year as to what their priority of capital needs are. So, the people who give me the detail for this plan are all the professionals in the individual departments. Basically, I take that plan and put it into this template, make sure it's clear. What really is important, and this is their plan and their priorities, and I don't think they put everything they would like, so this is not everything, but it's the items that they believe are the priorities in each of the given six years. And it's just that, it is a plan. It's not designed to, and I think the motion on this to say take out capital expenditure was appropriate because we're not voting on any expenditures. We're basically looking at what is our future plan, what are the needs of the departments over the next year's years, as requested by the department heads for these specific departments. So, you know, I've heard people say, well, this isn't complete, this isn't good. When I attempted to do this, I took it from the place where the professionals told me it was the best. So, I don't know how to respond to the comments being made because, as I understood this from the professionals, this was as good as it gets. So, I'm not going to debate that. I can only tell you the process I used. I believe it's an excellent product and comparing on, and I went to a lot of websites to look at capital plans throughout the state. I probably looked at, I don't know, 12 or 13 different websites of towns that were recommended to me. I frankly thought the accountant, the professional in the finance office of this particular town, not only did a great job on this, did a great job on all this financial documentation. And I thought I was bringing forward something that would be exceptional. So, obviously, people can have their own opinions. That was my goal in the way I moved forward with this.
Thank you. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Real quick to the town manager. How long have you been using this spreadsheet, this software, this program? Has it been approved, was it approved last year? Same one?
It was approved last year.
Year before?
Yes. And none of these concerns were raised, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Lazo?
Prior to Southbridge, have you ever done a capital improvement plan in your prior jobs?
Absolutely. I've done capital plans for basically my whole career. Four years when I was the mayor of the town of Nagatuck, two years in the town of Manchester.
Then why would you call the revenue department if you know how to do it?
Well, quite frankly, this is better than what I've seen in the past because the state recommended this one to me, and I purposely, I wasn't pleased with what we had in Southbridge. It was a couple of pages, and frankly, truthfully, I couldn't find much in the past in terms of a capital plan, and that was because I was told there wasn't much capital money. The town had not had a lot of money, the free cash was being used for operating. So, when we freed up free cash, we're no longer borrowing money, there was a need to really develop a good plan. So, I looked for the best. I mean, that was my template. So, I've been doing this for a long time, and this is probably the best I've seen, so I.
I respect your opinion on that. I'm not going to debate that. But I have done capital improvement plans with Jacobs, Howley, Chandler, I mean, numerous town managers. I've done them on school side, where Florence Chandler used to give us $50,000, don't tell us how to spend it, because school had their own $50,000 a year. We had the budget at 50, let it accumulate for bigger projects and deal with it that way. But the capital improvement was done off of a lot of oversight by the government side, holding department heads and manager accountable on identifying the inventory. In other words, okay, you need this. What do we have? And, you know, it's easy to say, okay, we're going to do this, and I've seen some real good department heads in my time, which are very good at budgets, and it makes a lot of sense. But then the follow-through after it's done doesn't seem to resemble what we talked about at the previous meeting. And I think that, I'll give you one for instance, it's none of our chiefs that we have now, they were going for a high-end forestry truck because the old forestry truck couldn't do it anymore.
Yeah.
Only to buy the forestry truck and keep the old forestry truck to send it into the forest. So, as a counselor, I have no problem working on a capital improvement plan. This is not quite what I'm used to seeing, okay? I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent. If this is the document, then we as councilors, if we want to improve it, let's improve it. It's a starting point.
Mr. Manager? First, thank you. I appreciate that very much. As a matter of fact, in the, your first year, I didn't get any capital improvement planned off in the school system, and I was a little bit puzzled for that. Obviously, all my departments gave it to me, but the school system had not. I found out later that they did have one, but for whatever reason, it wasn't coming up through the structure and getting to me, right? So, I've asked the school system, you'll see if you look now at the six-year plan, the school system is included in this. Also included in this is a result of the facility management study we did, and I will say right now that we all recognize that that facilities management plan in terms of dollars is estimates and not actuals, and there's questions to look at, but it is a plan. So, we tried to incorporate all of the facility needs, the capital facility needs of all the buildings into this plan. Well, that has been done for the town side of government. It has not yet been done for the school side because the schools just had their facilities plan done. So, in future years, you're going to see them incorporate all the facility needs from their facilities needs plan into this as well. You know, I can only use, I'll use DPW as an example. DPW has quite an extensive detailed capital improvement plan, particularly for equipment and trucks and things like that, that is much more extensive than what you're looking here tonight. What is sad is that, you know, we have to pick out only those things we can fund because there's a long list. I mean, you know, Heather will tell you, she's got this giant list of things she believes she needs because she does what you suggest. She has an inventory of existing equipment, right? She looks at existing equipment, and then the sad part is she has to pick out what her biggest need is because she has timelines already set up for when she should replace it, but we don't have the money, right? So, she picks out the top item. So, you know, I'll particularly say that our DPW is exceptional in terms of looking at their capital needs. I think the downside is that we have big dreams in terms of capital, but we don't have the funding to do all the things that are requested by departments. But this is, this is truthfully, is really, I don't want to take credit for this list. All of these things are the requests of department heads, the professionals who run their towns. These aren't mine. I don't say, hey, you know, this is the truck I think you should buy. Heather gives me her list, she gives me her priorities, she puts it in, she allocates it across the six years. This is the most important thing she needs. This is her bible, is what I would call it, or at least her guidance.
Okay. I have, Councilor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just so you all know, it wasn't the format that I was talking about. It was the way it was put together, the discussion, and some of the items that we didn't get back to yet, some of the stuff that wasn't brought to us that we requested. And Councilor Steves is right, he makes a really good point. We're voting on a six-year capital plan that we only discussed one year on, so I can't, yeah.
Councilor Steves?
Thank you. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry, if I could just add on to that. In past years, since I've been a counselor, we used to get capital items right in our budget book, right in the back. We used to get the things that the departments needed. That would come right in with our budget book in the past too, along with other information. So, just putting that out there. Thank you.
No, that's a point well taken. It is part of the charter that requires that. It should have been part of the budget message, so. Councilor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate a second, you know, I actually appreciate being able to see this list of the kinds of issues that are there, and that's important. I think my concern is that, I think, as I mentioned a minute ago, there is no real backup to what the, what the, you know, why we need some of these things and which ones are the most critical. And also, there's a few things in here, like, for example, just taking the first page of FY 21, has a couple of items here that really even aren't capital items. They don't belong there at all. I mean, they're, so, I mean, that's, and I would just like to see it cleaned up and have us get some of the details of why we really need these items.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want people to understand, that's why I make all my department heads attend the capital budget planning subcommittee so that you would have the opportunity to ask them questions on all these individual items. You know, we focused, we tend to focus on the year at hand, the fiscal year 2020, because that's where we're allocating resources in. So, I know that the councilors particularly focus hard on this year's plan because they actually have to put money to them. You know, we don't get into details about what's going on in 2025, for instance, because, you know what, it could change from then, and we might have other priorities and other needs. So, I've never seen councilors really quiz department heads about future year needs as much in terms of the details. Because it's just, you know, it's interesting, in the capital budget plan, the most important years are your early years because you can plan better those early years and you know your needs better. When you start looking at year 25 and 26, it's kind of a long way out, and you're kind of guessing as to what you need. It's not as detailed. So, I think, truthfully, I think the councilors do a very good job in asking the department heads, why do you need this? What are you doing? And it's very detailed, and as you know, those discussions go on for a long period of time, particularly on certain kind of issues. So, I, quite frankly, I think the councilors do a great job in analyzing it on a very detailed basis, on an annual basis. You know, what happens is now, we did 2020 here, next year, we'll be doing 2021, we'll focus on that, 2020, you know, we'll have another 2027 add-on to it, and that won't be as important, right? So, I think department heads are wise in focusing on this in the early years and putting much more detail in the early years, and later years are not so detailed. But I will always make my department heads available to any of you to answer specific questions as to why they're, and frankly, they have to justify it to me and Karen before it even gets to you. But when it gets to you, you're, I love the fact that you ask those questions.
Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points that you had brought up for the town manager. I'm used to doing a five-year, what, annual, semi-annual, quarterly, monthly, weekly, daily plan. And so, you know, if the department heads are not really looking five years down the road, that's not proper planning. If we're just moving one item to another year, I don't think that's really good. And I just don't see that really happening. I just think it's just something that hopefully they are taking into consideration for their fleet, for their personnel, for their, whatever it may be. But I will say is, we discussed this, I understand there was a few questions about details, and I do have some concerns. But those concerns, because I learned quite a bit here during this budget cycle, I will be addressing with the future chair, I'll be addressing with the town manager, and down the road, possibly, the department heads. So, I'm going to move this along, and I'm in favor of just approving this, so, that's all I have. I'm in favor.
Councilor Lazo?
Councilor Adams, you hit it right on the head. Prior planning prevents blank performance. Anybody that doesn't look beyond their nose into the 50 of a capital improvement plan shouldn't be working in Southbridge. The taxes go up, the reval goes up, the water goes up, and everybody goes, that's what it takes to run it. It's because nobody knows that there's a 15-year roof on a building while it's coming due, we're going to have to replace it at some point. They wait till it leaks, and then they say, oh, we have a leaky roof, let's fix it. Prior planning is, in long-range planning, I understand, Mr. Manager, that there's a short-term plan. That's what hits you in the face. You act like a firefighter, put the fire out. I get that. We all have done that. On the long-term planning, that's where you're an intelligent finance person that attacks the issues before they hit you in the face. That's what the capital improvement plan was, or is, or should be. So, I sit here and I listen to this, and I'm shocked that you would even say that, well, we don't really look at the long-term. I understand this year, you know how many dollars you have to spend. That's what you're attacking. I get that. The most important part of the capital improvement plan is the long-term plan. So, you don't react to the problems. You plan for them. You know this truck has 150,000 miles on it. The cruiser has so many miles on it. You know, and I know that if you do the planning on it, you can tell this vehicle's not going another year. We need to put the money aside. Not whether you have the money, because I remember when I was a counselor, they were towing cruisers into a police station that was falling down due to the lack of planning. So, for me, I mean, whatever the plan is, it is. But I plan on, as a counselor, to get a little more information before I just turn around and say, I'm not saying the councilors didn't do good work. I wasn't here for the work, so I'm not going to be voting in favor of this. And what I'm hearing right here disturbs me greatly. I'm glad I'm on the council, maybe we could turn some light bulbs on, so everybody can see what they're doing.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Manager.
First, thank you. So, so I'm a little, I don't know if I said something in the wrong way or not, so let me be clear. This has all six years of a plan. The plans are here, Mr. Lozo, as you, or Councilor Lozo, as you described, the department heads went at great lengths to look at and see what we need for six years, for the very reasons you spoke about. It's for purposes of planning. We know, for instance, and I'm gonna use DPW again for an example, we know what the mileage is on all the trucks, what the expected lifespan is on all those vehicles, they're in here for the, for the six years, the, the information we need. All I was referring to is that in the later years, it's harder, particularly for the pricing, because you don't know what the cost will be six years from now on some of these things. But the priorities within this sometimes change. I mean, something that might be done in, you know, we expect to finance it 2025, it's in the plan, and all of a sudden it breaks down, and all of a sudden we need to buy in 2021 instead of 2025, right? So, you know, the, the great thing about this plan is it's just that. It, it, it is a way, and it is used as a tool to allow us to do the good things you're talking about, to be prepared for, hey, you know what, in five years, the rooks are gonna be, you know, out of date and no longer in their purpose life. So, I think this is perfectly outlines that and does that very, very well, so, you know, but, but it is true that the early years are more detailed than the later years.
Councilor Dan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my fellow councilors about proper planning, I think that is important. But let me just say that during the course of my first year on the council, that I met personally with at least a dozen different department heads, and we talked about budget needs, you know, what, what were they looking for, what did they feel they needed? And I'll tell you, to a person, everyone had a real good idea about what would they need immediately, and what they would need in the near and distant future. It's my gut feeling that as I look at the numbers that we've been given, that the department heads have chosen valid immediate needs, and as you look through the following years of the plan, that, um, due credence has been given to what they need. I think, I think planning has been made. Just as an example, almost from the beginning, I've been hearing about the sewer treatment plant, and how old it is, and the kind of work that it needs. And I'll tell you, it, almost like she's a Svengali or something, Heather has just come up with needs that we've, we've had to make, predictions that she's made have come true. She's talking about the infrastructure starting to fall apart, and then what happens, Moore Street has a problem, we're looking at problems potentially, work to be done on Main Street, because the system there is very old. I think the planning is being made, I think there is forethought, I think there is good forethought. So I just want to make, make it known that this isn't willy-nilly, this isn't just shooting from the hip here. I think that there has been due diligence, and I want to reassure the public that it's not just haphazard, that, that we are aware of what needs to be done, and I think that there's been a very strong, uh, response to the fiduciary responsibility that the department heads have, and that the county council and the town manager has. Thank you.
Councilor Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree that there has been planning done, but some of this has just been copy and pasted pool, right on the spreadsheet. Heather at the DPW does an excellent job on planning. We knew five years ago that we were gonna have to, um, raise taxes to appropriate for the money that we're gonna have to spend down to, um, for the sewer plant, because of the deterioration of just about everything down there, falling apart. We know that the infrastructure here in town is very old, and it needs attention, just like any other town in Massachusetts. It's falling apart. You know, bridges, um, the, the pipes underneath are bursting, the, the roads, they, everything needs to be repaired. I mean, you can't expect something that's 100 years old to be as good as it was 100 years ago. I totally get that. My, my concern here is what I said, you know, we haven't gotten some of the information that we, we requested, um, and we're voting on a six-year capital plan that we only discussed one year. I wouldn't mind voting on a one-year, the fiscal year 20, um, capital plan, and put in all the other years, you know, on hold, to go back down to general government so we can discuss it properly. Um, and that, I would support that, but I can't support a six-year capital plan that we only discussed one year on. I mean, that's, we're, we're doing a disservice to the community if we only discussed on one year, and not on all six years. So, I would support this fiscal year, and put the other fiscal years on hold until the next general government meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I wasn't done, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were done, I apologize.
I am done, yeah, I'm done, nevermind.
You sounded like you were winding.
I was winding down.
I apologize, I wasn't trying to cut you off. Councilor Adams.
So that meeting of that night, when we did look at this, I think that meeting went for, what, three and a half hours to five hours long?
Just this item, yeah.
Yeah, just this item. Uh, was there a reason why we cut off that meeting then, and we could have discussed the, the other five years?
I think it was at the time at 11 o'clock at night.
Okay, just asking, thank you.
You're awesome. So, and, just wanna put my input into this. I'm a big proponent, and I think one of my fellow councilors knows, I'm a big proponent for capital plans, capital planning and how to implement it. And I just want to be clear, there's no diff, there's no doubt that of the needs of the town, that the department heads have articulated their case to us about their needs. My concern is in the definition of capital improvements program within the charter. And the charter's pretty clear. It says that a six-year capital improvement program shall include a clear summary of its contents, a list of all capital improvements for, proposed, but, to be undertaken during the next six fiscal years with supporting data. So my concern with this capitals improvement program is not the need so much, is that it's not a properly submitted capital improvements program plan per charter. There was no summary, I brought that up that night, there was no summary, a, a document summary that said, dear councilors, dear town, this is the capital improvements program, these are some of the projects that were put forth last year, that we were not able to fund, we had to prioritize certain things to move forward to this year, based on last year not being able to fund it. There was none of that in the plan. And that's, the list is great, I think it's great to have it costed out, you know what years you're gonna put that in, but from the manager's office, there was no, and I said this at the meeting, so it's nothing new, there was no summary, no prioritization, uh, I think I brought up, and I've said to others, on FY20, and last year, if you were to go back and look at last year's budget, in FY20, the fire department, and I know I get accused of being too public safety heavy, but I'm just using that as an example, the fire department had an ambulance scheduled in the capital improvement plan for FY20 to replace a 2008 ambulance. I look at the proposed six-year capital improvement program plan, that ambulance is no longer there, redlined or whatever, there's no explanation as to, we removed it, or it was here, and, and we removed it, there was no conversation. So I sit here going, what happened to the 2008 ambulance? Did we actually need an ambulance? Can we last another year with the ambulance? Because we just went down the road of staffing the fire department with additional firefighters, and saying that, uh, in order for this to be costed out over four years, we're gonna look to increase ambulance revenue, and in order to increase ambulance revenue, we're gonna need ambulance, we have three ambulances, because if one goes down, we always have two. So it's a whole plan that the council here has talked about, but it disappeared in this capital plan with no rationale. So to me, that is the concern of not the whole, the list is great, it tells us a whole blueprint of how much it's gonna cost, but there's no explanation in the details to say, hey, guys, FY20, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we're gonna prioritize. Furthermore, we have a standard operating procedure that says if you're gonna replace a vehicle, you have to submit this point, uh, this, this form, in, or any request for capital for vehicles. We don't have any data, we have a couple, and there's no doubt, chief, no doubt you need cruisers, uh, no doubt that the DPW needs their vehicles, I'm not questioning that, but we have a process, we have a procedure, was not followed, it was not put as part of the capital expenditures plan. So to my fellow councilor's point, I am all in support of the FY20 capital improvements, uh, program, because we vetted out these expenditures extensively. I am concerned with approving a six-year plan that doesn't meet the requirements of the charter as set forth. So, that's my two cents. Councilor Lozo.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand what I'm saying. The department heads are supposed to come forward and ask for what they need, the true needs. I think they did their job. My, my, my thing is, when you are in charge of the taxation portion of the community, the reval, the rates, and you vote these as councilors, I think that it's all-inclusive when you see a five, six-year plan, that some things do get bumped, but they're explained why they were bumped. And there are things that have to happen, no matter what, which goes to the top of the priority list, as councilors to say, those two cruisers and that ambulance have to happen. Something else has to suffer. I understand how this works. It's not my first prompt. My thing is, the capital improvement plan is work in progress all the time. It doesn't go away like, oh, I got a capital improvement plan this year. No, we have one, and it never stops, continues to rotate, and then this way here, we don't deteriorate. So it works very well. My problem is not with you, my problem is what we have done going forward, we could change it, I'm optimistic. I wasn't here to build this capital improvement plan. So how do I go, oh yeah, I'm in favor of that? That will not happen here tonight, but don't misunderstand what I'm trying to do, let's get on our toes and let's do a better job as far as following the charter and explaining how, why, and when this happens. So we can go back, as a representative former government, and tell the taxpayers why it's the way it is, and why didn't we do what we did? Right now, we have an electorate that rides around on roads that they complain about, schools that they complain about, there were a lot of good things going on in Southbridge, and I'd like to promote the positives, but we need to take care of some of our problems. And that's why, on the capital improvement plan, I'm a big fan of long-range planning. I wanna know what you need next year, the year after. I can prep myself when I do expenditures during the year, when we have the spend-a-thon, as they used to call it, from free cash. Maybe we can't do it, maybe that cruiser and that ambulance is more important. It's our job up here, here's where I have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Smith, 145 Ridge Road, again for the point of clarity. Uh, I think this town has some pretty damn good department managers. They will tell you when something is on its way out. What the capital plan does is a planning document for you, for your finances. Almost every year, we replace two cruisers. I don't think any of you guys are going, or women are going down the station flipping the hood. That's their job. Your job's to find the money. Now, not to disagree with you, counselor, but we have done things shoot from the hip on capital, and we should try to avoid doing that. If your job through your six-year capital plan is to find the money, they're telling you the needs, it's gonna be forecasted over six years, by the end of tonight's meeting, do you know how much this town's gonna be spending around for capital in total? With their borrowing and what they're appropriating, almost $10 million. Councilor Lozo, you remember, you said it earlier, the years Florence gave us $50,000. How does that $50,000 stand up to the almost $10 million today? That's why we need the financial planning. Now, the town manager's right, I think it was what, two years ago, you came with this new format for the six-year plan. It was an improvement over what we had before. But the format's not the argument, it's the information that's in the format, or specifically the lack thereof. That's the problem. And if you could fix that, it's gonna make your job a lot easier for the financial forecast over the next three, four, five years. Everybody knows there are things that happen, things are gonna have to be shuffled, but that's gonna work itself out within the plan. So don't confuse what your job is, come up with the money. And that's what the six-year capital plan is about. They'll bring up the items, you find the money. In the meantime, if, uh, if they fudge your numbers, then that's their fault. Okay? Thank you.
So we have an amended motion, which was vote to approve the six-year capital plan FY2020 to FY2025. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one more thing.
Didn't see you sneak out, councilor.
Yes, snuck out, thanks. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. So, I couldn't agree again more with the previous speaker, because I've got FY21, and I encourage citizens out there to come to the town hall and ask to look at this. It's not the first time we've seen it look like this. You have projected amount requested, lots of pages, but if cameras looking at all, what you see is blanks. I don't disagree that this is a great format, it was, it's better in some respects. We have had plans in the past, I will not get in and debate on some of the comments that were made here tonight, but I can tell you that when across the top, it says the department, it says the CIPC requests, so what do they want, projected amount is requested, and from there on, it's blank, on almost every page, with the exception of the water and sewer issues, because those are generally done out of retained earnings, and so they know where the money's coming from. But here, Town of Southbridge FY21, capital project requests and funding sources, no doubt that's part of the, um, this template. Then you've got your first column, CIPC amount approved, zero, operating budget, free cash, revolving enterprise retained earnings, enterprise borrowing, article turnbacks, long-term debt, other sources, and totals. Blank. Now I know we can't guarantee what we're going to have, but if you're supposed to be projecting for the community where we might get this, then there should be some blanks filled in. Are you gonna put it into your operating budget? That means you're gonna have to raise taxes and get it, are you, is it, coming from the, um, the enterprise funds are marked in, as I said, on the sewer page, you will see a million dollars or a million and a half dollars on some of the, uh, this water and sewer, the wastewater and, and, um, plants. But every other page, and this is 21, mind you, there's no plan, it's not a plan, it's just a request list from our department heads who worked hard, I'm sure, to put it together. But the job that needs to be done takes a lot more than a quick copy and paste from the year before. And I say it again, and I ask respectfully that you do not approve the rest of it, so that it can be done appropriately. Thank you.
Councilor Mayor.
Mr. Chair, I know we made an amendment for the end to say the six-year capital plan, but I'd like to make an amendment, vote to approve a one-year capital plan for fiscal year 2020. Um, I would like to make that amendment, if we could, and bring back the other five years to...
But I think under the charter, it's a six-year plan, I mean, you can, um, certainly, that, that's the motion, I, because the charter is specific to, you can amend or change the six-year plan.
Okay, then I amend that we, then I ask that we put this on hold so we can go through, because how can we vote on something that we haven't discussed, that we were supposed to discuss? This was supposed to be discussed, a six-year capital plan. We can discuss it, I can discuss it with me, and I could probably call the town manager, right? But all five of us without a meeting, or all nine of us without a meeting, we can't discuss it together, because then we're violating open-mining law. So this is something that's very important to the town, it's very important to the town council, and I think that it needs to be further discussed. I can't, I can't support something that we really didn't discuss, only one year, that's what I'm saying. I know they need their money, I know they need things, we didn't get some things. I mean, we, the $40,000 for Henry Street, we never got any, any information on that. We, that, we were supposed to get that, we didn't get it.
So, I, we have a fiscal year budget coming up, and I, I certainly respect your questions about the, uh, plan itself, however, the, I believe that the expenditures that we vetted out, out of the capital FY20 were fully vetted, and that we should not put a hold on the entire capital plan at the expense of the FY20 capital expenditures, because as a council, these department heads came in and, and gave a, uh, it was well-detailed, well-thought-out, we vetted it, like I said, that was a three and a half, four-hour meeting, so I do not want, my, me personally, I wouldn't vote to vote down the capital improvement plan to say that now we're not gonna fund these capital budget items out of the free cash, because it's a separate, distinct conversation. So, and I think, personally, I think you could probably still vote on capital expenditures that we vetted without approving the plan, and refer the plan back.
I was just gonna ask that, yeah.
So. Questions? Councilor Mayor.
So then, I, I would, um, I would like to make a motion to bring this back to subcommittee.
Well, this would be an up or down vote, you either vote, so you're asking to...
So if it's an up or down vote...
So you're asking, oh, okay, go ahead, Gamm, your motion, go ahead, I interrupted.
That's okay. I don't believe we should do an up or down vote, because then somebody from the opposing side has to bring it back up. So I believe that we should send this back to subcommittee to be further discussed. And then, my, my other question I was gonna ask you, you brought up anyways, we can still vote on the, um, the money, the, from free cash.
I believe we can, because it's just capital, it's capital expenses, because...
Right.
It's, you know, the, while, they, while they were in a plan, nothing stops us from voting capital items at any time without a plan.
So I'd like to make an amendment to send the six-year capital plan back to a subcommittee for further discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Second, did she get a second on that motion?
She got a second. Was there a discussion? Councilor Lozano?
In favor of the amendment to go to subcommittee, I'd like to get involved with it a little bit before I vote extension, so I'll be in favor of voting to send it back to subcommittee.
So the motion is to refer back the six-year capital plan FY 2020, FY 2025 to general government, correct? That's the amendment?
Yes.
Any further discussion on that as amended? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Motion carries. So that's for the amendment. So now in the main motion, vote to refer back to general government, subcommittee, the six-year capital plan FY 2020, FY 2025. So that's the main motion. Any further discussion on that? Can you repeat that, please? Okay. So we did the amendment, which was to refer back, we passed that amendment. Now this is the, the main motion as amended, to refer back to general government. Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Now, not to complicate things, but I just want to offer amendment right off the bat if I could because this was brought up in general government, subcommittee, and did not make, and we were going to bring it up at the meeting and this was just, so I want this motion, vote to amend, and it to read, vote to appropriate $1,371,435,000 from free cash for the FY 2020 capital budget as follows, and add central dispatch radio console and $60,000. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Manager? That says on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the discussion in general government was on item number 16.
It was.
To take it from the $300,000, to take the $60,000 from there and reduce the free cash to the stabilization to $240,000. That's my recollection.
Yeah, but you...
That would have been on the agenda if we didn't get to it.
Well, that's, that's the next vote. We still have to appropriate $60,000 from free cash to the capital budget for that project. Am I not correct, Karen?
I, I think you could do it either way. I suppose it's cleaner to put it up here with the capital and then just amend Agenda Item 16 to be $240,000.
Correct. It's just cleaner.
Yep.
Because it's within that capital budget for the year.
Yep. That's fine.
Okay. Any questions on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, you're amending the, the bottom line on the appropriation for FY, free cash FY 2020.
That's true.
On item 16, is that where the $60,000 comes in?
Yeah. So we're appropriating free cash, so we had a total amount of free cash. So the, the free cash of the above and the bottom was a total amount.
I, I understand that, but you tied the $60,000 to Agenda Item Number, appropriate, the total appropriation. Why would you do that if you're going to attach it to 16?
No, we're going to reduce 16 by $60,000.
Right. But the bottom, we don't have to, my point is that the line of 60 doesn't go on this vote, correct? This amendment?
It goes on the top of amendment because it's going to go...
That, I think you just should amend the, the bottom line and to increase that.
Right.
And in 16, you show the increase on 16. That's what I thought you should do.
No, no, no. We have to reduce 16 because the free cash is, the total free cash was going to stabilization of $300,000. We are now going to take $240,000 from free cash to stabilization. So that's $60,000.
So you want the $60,000 item on the...
From free cash.
Okay.
Clarify, Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Counselor Steve?
I think what, I think what he's trying to say is that the grand total for this Agenda item should be $1,371,435.
That's what I said.
That is what you said.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's what I said.
Okay, I'm just, okay, okay.
And to add it to this...
Right.
List of items.
And, because we'll end up having to devote.
Right. And we have to reduce the, the free cash that was going to go to stabilization. That was what we discussed at general government.
That we would have discussed in general.
No, we did discuss.
No, you did discuss it in general government.
Yeah, we did discuss that.
At the meeting before when we had the conversation about the radios.
Oh, right.
Consuls.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the motion as amended?
For the amendment first. This is the motion. We're voting on the amendment.
Right. Okay. All right. So now, vote to appropriate $1,371,435 from free cash for the FY 2020 capital budget as follows. Central dispatch radio console, $60,000.
Where are you, are you going down?
Yes, I am. I just added it.
Oh, you added it to the top. I put it at my bottom.
For you, Mr. Chairman, I believe that $60,000 is for portable radios.
No, no, $60,000 is that additional money you need that you didn't have enough money for.
I, I thought we had already voted on that.
No, it never came to the council.
It never came to full council.
Right.
I apologize.
Didn't want to forget it, that's why. Fire department, steer, chair replacements, $7,998. Administration vehicle, $58,692. Police department, purchased two police vehicles, $90,000. Portable radios, $30,000. Bulletproof vest for auxiliary officers, $16,000. Community van, $35,000. IT, DPW, and Town Hall windows, 2010, computer replacements, $19,000. Library gutters and dance belts on west side of building, $90,000. Recreation, replace Henry Street playground, $40,000. Community center, roof and gutter repairs, $85,000. DPW, replace the Ford dump F-350 for $75,000. Replace the Ford dump sand and plow, $225,000. Storm drainage, $175,000. Town Hall, engineering for window replacement, $30,000. Town Hall and economic development improvements, $10,000. Carpet replacement, $12,245. School department, fire and security alarms, security cameras and key codes, $30,568. Improvements to parking lots, $39,000. IT upgrades, additional technology equipment, $129,000. Lease of two vehicles, $43,432. Replace a wheelchair van, $58,000. Fire alarm systems at Chauton Street School and Eastford Road School, $12,500. A total of $1,371,435. Any discussion on this? Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a couple of things. First, the Henry Street playground, the recreation, we never got an official proposal on that. Nobody, it wasn't clear where that money was actually going to. So before I, this was supposed to be put on hold, so I think that should be separated from this. And we look at the Town Hall and the economic development improvements, I believe that was the systematic painting of the interior, $10,000, and we agreed not to do that. And that's how the police department was getting the extra $10,000.
No.
For some reason, I have it for portable radios, $40,000, not $30,000.
No, $30,000.
So the Town Hall and economic development improvements was the painting of the interior. That's $10,000. And we were taking that out of there to give it to the police department for the portable radios.
So in regards to the Henry Street playground, the motion, I believe, was that we would put that money as capital, however, that no monies would be expended until the, until the plan was presented to town council.
So shouldn't that be put separate from this because all this other money is supposed to be, you know, is, is being spent? We already approved all the other money. So that money should actually, it should be a separate line item.
Yeah, you want to take, take it?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I understand your point. I know the, the intent of council at that meeting was that because we had no plan, because of the whole conversation that took place there, that we wouldn't allow any monies to be expended unless we had approval first.
Right.
But it was a placeholder for the amount of money.
Right. I mean, we're not taking that money and putting it someplace else. It's just, but we're not spending it right now, so I think it should be. But the, the Town Hall and the economic development improvements, that $10,000, I, I swear that that was supposed to go for the portable radios.
So the conversation, I believe, if I recall, is, and the chief reminded me earlier, we, he had $10,000 for a painting in the Town Hall that was, in the police department that was recommended. He, he withdrew that proposal saying he could find some other maintenance funds within his operating budget to accomplish the painting and that he would take the additional $10,000 and put it over to radios because those were, were needed. And the original free cash appropriation was $20,000 and we took the $10,000 from...
Right. And I, I totally understand that, but for some reason, I have, I thought, okay, here it is, I thought there was another $10,000 that we were putting into the portable radios to make it $40,000.
We had talked about it and then we withdrew it. We had talked about change this money, I think Council Adams and I, we had talked about taking $10,000 to add it to radios, and then we had talked about giving $50,000 to DPW to do sidewalks, and then the conversation came back and we withdrew it because we're at that point where we said, until we get a better understanding of some of the projects that are out there, we were just going to leave it the way it was. And we did not give the extra 10 for the 40, is my understa, recollection of that. Mr. Manager?
So if I could add something, if I, again, trying to recall, but I'm pretty comfortable saying that there was an additional $10,000 in the free cash distribution for painting of Town Hall and what essentially, as I referred to the discussion, saying we're taking the $10,000 for painting of Town Hall and we're giving it to the economic development director to do the work that she wanted to do. That was, that was my recollection of how that played out.
Yep.
Okay. So then just, then I just had one more thing.
Okay.
And I'm just going to talk about the carpet replacement. That should have been taken care of long before we had to dish out another almost $13,000. When the, because I believe that's a carpet replacement in the town clerk's office and wasn't there, there was something when they first put that, that carpet down, it was already bubbling and stuff and it was, it wasn't put down correctly. So for me, that matter should have been taken care of well before we have to spend another $12,000.
I know we had that conversation.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Come, Mr. Manager?
Sure, the, you're, you're correct that the, we believe that the original carpeting that was put in, there was some discussion, you know, because it became, you're right, correct, bubbling up and stuff, it was the discussion about if the person who installed it did it correctly or not. Our, our town assessor worked with that person. We attempted very strongly to bring him back in and get him to fix the carpeting. I think he fixed one small section of it in the assessor's office. He, we, we believed that he was going to do the work in the registrar's office to the degree that we took stuff out of that office, and then that guy never did the work. There was no guarantee, so we couldn't force him to do the work. And the equipment, the office furniture, or the office furniture went back into the registrar's office, but the town assessor put a lot of effort in, multiple phone calls, multiple conversations, trying to get that contractor to do the work for free to replace that carpeting in to no avail.
Just disappointing.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, I, Councilor Man, I may have missed something you said, but I believe you're right, under economic development, originally it was $12,500. We took that money, we moved it over to the fire, I lost it. Fire alarm system, right? So we moved that over, but in the Town Hall, it had $10,000 that they're going to split up between economic and Town Hall. So I think that's how it all planned out. Lot of moving parts. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to add into that conversation. So what my understanding was from that meeting is that the $10,000 that's listed under Town Hall systematic painting was to include economic development improvements, but not only just for economic development, for anything that Town Hall and economic development needed. That's why it's listed here under Town Hall as Town Hall and economic development improvements. So if that isn't correct, then we probably want to correct that, but that was my understanding, that could be for both.
Right. That was, that was the intent of that at that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't solely for the economic development because we didn't have any backup materials at the meeting for that and no one was in that department, so. Councilman?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So taking, taking all this into consideration and the recreation to replace Henry Street playground, separating that to another line item, the, it should now read $1,331,435.
So...
Because we're going to move the $40,000 down to another line item and vote on that separate.
So I, I guess the intent, I understand your intent, but it's still going to be a capital expenditure within the year, we think. So I, I, could we put just next to it, like, an asterisk that says, funds do not be spent until approval?
Can we, can we ask Karen, Ms. O'Nory, what the, what the best way to be, the cleanest way? Because to me...
Otherwise, it just sits there in free cash. I mean, it's still part of a capital budget. One way, whatever way you vote it, even if you take it out of this list, it's still going to be a capital project funded from free cash.
Right. But now we have recreation, we place Henry Street playground, we're approving $40,000 even though we said, no, we're going to hold on to it until we have a plan, and it's not stated in here.
But it could stay in the plan, it can stay in the capital expenditures for FY 20 and not be expended until we give approval for it.
I, I would feel...
Am I correct there, Karen?
All right, so let me just ask Councilor Man, if she can, so unfortunately, what happens with the free cash, if we don't vote it by June 30th, it goes back into the pool and it's all cer, it's certified, we can't use it. So we do want to have a plan that we're going to use it within a reasonable amount of time. So we could vote it, put it on hold, but we don't want to put it on hold, you know, indefinitely.
So you're not ask, you, you don't recommend that we put it to another separate...
Could you speak into the mic, Councilor? Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. You don't, you don't recommend that we move it to a separate line item stating that, you know, we're approving this under these conditions? I mean, because we don't have no plan for this money. I mean, we just, we didn't want to approve the $40,000 down in subcommittee and recommend it to come up here because there was no plan.
Correct.
And so now we're voting on money that there is no plan for and it's just sitting there.
Right.
So I think if it's in a separate line item, that we approve it under these conditions, you know?
So, if I could just respond to that? I think you're, part of that response is incorrect. We had concerns about it, but we never said we wouldn't take it out of the capital plan and not refer it up. It was clear at that meeting that we would, we would keep it as part of the capital plan within this free cash distribution, however, it could not be expended until it, until a plan came forward to council.
Right. And we don't have, we don't even have...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I, I understand.
So what I'm saying is just put an asterisk next to this in the record, it states, out of that $40,000 cannot be expended until approval of Town Council.
Would that be okay to do in this?
My concern that I would have, and I would probably see that this would not take place this summer. I don't think there will be a plan coming together that quickly, correct?
Mr. Manager?
No, I don't think that's true. I think that the veteran agent, really, the intent of the plan when it was brought forward to our recreation director at the time, I think you guys all know the small plastic playground that was there, the intention was to rip out that old plastic playground that's graffiti and everything all over, replace it with another small one, and then right next to it, put a little larger one for bigger kids. And then if there was leftover money to replace the slide, I don't think that was articulated very well at that committee meeting. I've asked our veteran agent, community service director, to look, to work with companies, and there's a ton of companies out there that make those things, to give us cost estimates to bring back to Town Council Subcommittee to go through that plan with them. I don't think that would take longer than that. I think you could do that within a week. There's all kinds of companies that can give you those kind of estimates.
I would just be concerned that, you know, we're looking to replace the recreation director right now. I'm not really sure that, you know, our community services director has, has the time to devote I'm not really sure that, you know, our community services director has, has the time to devote to it and I would hate to see us standing, you know, being here a year from now saying that we haven't spent any of the 40.
So...
You know, so, you know, it's not my decision to make, but that's just my advice.
So I did have that conversation and he's here, we can ask him, but he assured me that there's something he could do and look at. There's all kinds of books for that. I mean, I guess it, he seemed to be okay with doing it from my perspective, I don't know if he has any issues, but I don't see this as a heck of a lot of work to, to look at those. There's a couple of companies you call that give you plans and it's, to me, it's less than a week's work in terms of time, but...
Well, true, but then it has to go to subcommittee, be vetted out, then it has to come to council. I'm not trying to be a downer on it, I'm just trying to be realistic about what we want to do with it.
I respect your opinion because it's all easy to say it'll take a week, but in town government and doing playgrounds and making sure we get proper permits and then if DPW has to do something that, we tried to give them money just to fix some sidewalks this year and they're too busy, I've been concerned that perhaps it'd be best to hold on this project and make sure the recreation department does a complete study of, of what they want to do down there and do the playground correctly. And to finance director's point, I would hate for that money to just sit there and not be, not be used, so I understand her point. Council Adams, did you have...
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's just, I don't know if we have to put another item down here, or a line item, or agenda item, or anything like that, I think we just need to go ahead and put the language in that this $40,000 will be on hold until approved by the town council to release the funds.
Second. Okay, so there's an amendment, which is what I had said earlier, so thank you.
Correct.
So the amendment is no changes in the amount, just to add to recreation, replace Henry Street Playground, that there is a hold on any expenditures until a plan is presented and approved by the town council.
Correct, yes.
So that was an motion accepted? Any discussion on that amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay, so there'll be a hold on that. You have that, Madam Secretary? Okay, so any further discussion on the overall plan? Council Steve, then Council...
Yeah, one quick question is, I recall when we talked about it at GenGov regarding the window replacement, I brought up the issue of possibly getting historical commission grants. The possibility, when we were talking about the engineering for window replacement, I mentioned back at GenGov that there are state historical commission grants available to do exactly that. Has any, has any effort been made to look into that?
Today's answer would be no, it has not been explored today.
That's certainly something I think we should...
Absolutely, because I know, like, for example, Watt Webster just got 30 grand to do a study of their town hall and Oxford got, I can't remember exactly how much, to do their library planning, that kind of stuff, so.
Historical.
Yeah, historical commission.
Council Lozo?
Two items on the windows. It says the engineering for the windows.
Yes.
What windows are we doing that need engineering? I'm kind of the building field, so I'm kind of...
Those ones back there. Among the others.
I mean, they have to meet the code, so what's the engineering cost?
Just want to make sure I do this correctly. Thank you, Council Lozo. We went through a great deal of conversation about this, particularly with the last town council. A number, this is a historical building, so it has different ramifications than windows at your house and the windows have to be designed in a certain way and have to be engineered. Myself and the DPW director had a lot of conversation about this and her conclusion was that it was best to get the engineering work done first so we could know exactly what we have to do and what the costs are involved in doing these windows. We had originally thought there were going to be a lot less in terms of dollars than we hear now with the historical requirements, so we expect it's going to be a lot more expensive to do the windows.
So this is the lead glass?
I'm sorry?
What we call steam glass?
No.
Replacement?
No. Our windows were tested prior to me even being here, that they have, I believe it's potentially asbestos or PCB materials in them, in the caulking, and that has to be removed prior to any of that. So the engineering needs to be done for the removal of that and then the replacement of the windows, which aren't even the lead glass windows, we're just talking our standard windows, to be compliant with historic preservation. So they have to be historically preserved and accurate because it's a historic building and there also is a hazardous component remediation in it additionally. So it's not just hiring a standard contractor to come and replace our windows because they have to be designed to be historic and it needs a remediation portion.
To that point, the reason I was asking the question is, if Lawrence Chandler redid all of the historical glass on the front and there was not an engineering firm on the job, the times have changed, maybe you have to have engineers now, but when they did the front, it was part of the bid for them to replace the glass as per respect to the historical artifacts that we forced out, historical windows. So I just had to ask a question, I thought, it's a change, it's a change. One other question on vehicles, administrative vehicle for the fire department, community van for the police department? The replacement of four dump trucks? My question is, I'm not, I'm in favor of replacement, what's happening to the old ones? Are they going on surplus?
I'm gonna start answering the question the fire chief made joining with me. My understanding is that in terms of the administration vehicle for the fire department that the chief will be using, the vehicle that the chief is using will move down to the deputy chief who has no vehicle. So it's, it will solve sort of two problems at one time, that's the administrative vehicle at the fire department. The community van, my understanding, this is, I've had a number of discussions with the chief and the deputy chief about this, the van that they had in place was, I think, completely dead and they wanted to replace that van. I forget exactly what they used that van for, so if the chief could elaborate the purpose of that van.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. Our current van is a 2001 Econoline passenger van, it was bought with a grant in 2001, it has about 68,000 miles on it now. Our mechanic has said the frame is cracked, cannot be driven anymore, it is not safe, it's being salvaged. The new community van that we're requesting tonight is for the cops and kids program primarily, but that's summer months transporting children to and from the program, but also, I know our previous community van, because I've lived and been here, has been used by town hall officials for training, fire department for training, DPW to take long trips for training, so it's a community van that says that anybody can use the van.
Chief, my question isn't whether we need the van or not, my question is, we're getting rid of the old one?
Yes, salvage it, yes.
My problem is, we expand everything in departments where now we're gonna have another vehicle at the fire department, which turns into money as far as gas operations, repairs. Did the council approve the expansion of that, which will end up being an expansion of cost? And I'm in favor of buying a chief's vehicle, but the minute you take another vehicle and you put it down, you're adding to your operation costs and that's how the budget does this, you say we have to have it. Do we have to have it, that's the question. For years, we did not have an assistant chief, never mind assistant chief with a vehicle. I understand the command vehicle, we always had one command vehicle for the fire department for 30 years, now we need two. It brings up the cost of doing business, guys, so when you go to raise the taxes, explain that to the taxpayer, that's what I'm talking about. Not whether you need the vehicle, I know you need that van, very familiar with it, along with the dump trucks and the chief's vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, I'll allow them to respond and I have councils, I have you on cue.
Through the chair, we are salvaging a 1999 Ford F-350 pickup truck, which was our old service truck that was bought in 1999. So we are, the deputy now is, is driving that vehicle. Again, our mechanic at the DPW and other mechanics have told us that the vehicle is unsafe, there is rot holes to the framework, so we are salvaging a vehicle.
My point again, maybe the captain needs one next, or the lieutenants? That's my point to this budget question. We spend money, good money, well, you need a new vehicle, I'm not arguing that point, but then we create more debt with the hand-me-downs and who gets what and the inspector has a vehicle. Forever, we had the inspector with the vehicle and the chief. The command vehicle and the inspector. And the council, I just wanted to make it aware that if this is what we're going to be doing, it expands the money that you're going to be spending on operating another command vehicle, two of them. So that's why I wanted to ask the question. You need a vehicle, not my question. Thank you.
Hello?
I will just state that both my vehicles are being traded in, so we are not increasing vehicles. One is a 1975, we are taking the sander off of it because it's a newer sander and the other is a 2001, that's the smaller dump pickup. And both of them will be, those vehicles will be traded in towards the purchase of the new vehicles.
And again, the vehicles have to be replaced, I get it. It's just controlling finances, our job, making sure that you are financed properly is our job and we will watch those tax dollars and that's, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Adams?
No, I'm good now.
Councilman? And then Council DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So Council Lozo brought up the engineer for the window replacement. It's just the engineering, there's no windows that are going to be replaced. Am I right in saying that? It's just the design, they're gonna come up with a plan? Is that, are you understanding me correctly?
You're treating me?
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not understanding what you're asking.
So the engineering for the window replacement, it's just an engineer coming in saying this is what we gotta do, this is what's gotta be done. It's a plan, right? $30,000. Well, looking through the five-year, at this year and going to the five-year, and this is why it needs to be discussed, there's nothing in here to replace any windows in the town hall. So we're spending $30,000 on an engineer to come in to give us a report on replacing the windows when it's not even planned for the next five years.
My understanding is that this, this window issue occurred actually before I came in at the town, I put money aside for these windows and it was an actual budget vote prior to me being here, putting money into windows and it never got done, one, because of a lot of discussion about how it could be done and then eventually getting to a point where we needed engineering work. So I think this was in a previous plan before even our capital plans were done. It's kind of a continuation of, and I guess I don't really know what year it was done, but I've been here almost four years, so it was prior to four years.
Okay, so this, this was, the window replacement money you're saying was approved, so it's sitting out there somewhere, like all the other capital projects, not being done. But you don't know where it is, but you're still gonna have $30,000, you still want $30,000 to get a report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's money in the account, perhaps, I don't know if Karen came prepared with the actual number of what's in that account, but there was money appropriated into an account by a past town council, again, before I came, for the purpose of dealing with the windows issue. That money, I don't believe, was spent because we never did the windows, but Karen, maybe you can give us a more detailed estimate of that.
If I, if I could, there was money that was put into an account that's called, I think it's improvements to town hall and some of the money was to be earmarked or was talked about to be for the window replacement. But then when we ran into some problems with can we replace them, how do we replace them, there was also the project of the inspections department that came up and we used some of that money towards that project. So there is some money left and I'm gonna say off the top of my head, maybe about $60,000. That's obviously not going to be enough to do the windows, but it would just be some starter money.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna bring this back. We got $30,000 for a study to be done for the window replacement with an engineering firm and you said there was money earmarked for it. We got Ms. Harnoy stating that $60,000 isn't enough and that's off the top of her head, she doesn't even know if that's the right amount, but nothing in the five years to talk about windows. I see carpet in there a lot and I see doing something to the basement, but there's nothing in here about windows. So that to me is very concerning.
Do I respond?
Thank you. So, so again, this was done previous to the capital plan and money was already allocated, that's why it isn't in the future plan. When we discussed this, we thought the window money would be enough within that account. It's already planned. You're correcting that if we have an engineering study done and it's more than the money that's in that account, we're gonna have to come back at some point to town council and see if they want to move forward, given whatever the new cost is going to be. But like I said, that was done previous to this capital plan, so that's why it's not in the capital plan.
So I guess, you know, I'm just gonna say this, knowing that there was some money, you didn't know how much, you just, you said that, you didn't know how much and it was done before you. You shouldn't have known how much before you, you put this money in here to do a study and there should be something in the capital plan over the next five years to show that, even if it's in the parentheses that, oh, guess what, we have, you know, we don't need that money because it's already there, it's already allocated for, right? But Karen's saying that there's only $60,000, if that, you didn't know how much before, so I guess really, you know, it was just like, you should have done your research better on the financing.
I, I, I understand your point and now, we spent five hours in a capital meeting. We talked about town hall improvements, we talked about painting town hall, we talked about rugs and now we have in this capital plan $12,000 for carpets, $10,000 for painting, $30,000 for windows, but yet we have an account, capital account, that we just found it out about tonight, that has $60,000, that's a town hall improvement account, that we didn't go back first and say, hey, let's take that 60 and expend it first, develop plans and then come back to the council with a concrete, I, I, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted at that right now. That's, to find that out right now, after all that time we spent talking about town hall improvements and batter, you know, it was exhaustive talking about this issue. That should have been part of the conversation, that we have capital monies already allocated for town hall improvements and we haven't touched it.
Yep.
You know, so I don't even know what to do at this point with town hall improvements, I mean, it's just, it's...
So I think...
I, I, I get it.
Maybe we should take it out.
Go ahead. Well, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I have to, Council DePietro, I apologize, you were waiting patiently.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This agenda item in general, I think is inappropriate in its scope. This, obviously, all of these dollar amounts went through subcommittee, but to put all these departments together in one budget, never mind separating these things out of the car, is the way I believe they should be voting on, $90,000, $40,000, $83,000, $75,000, oh, bang. You don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but it's, I don't think it's being presented to the council correctly. I think a lot of these things, there's necessities here, a lot of these things could be thrown to the wayside for a year, two years, three years, four years down the road and council does not have that, this had opportunity the way this is presented and there's one agenda item, $1.3 million, only one shot. I mean, I personally would take $300,000, $400,000 and throw this down the road a little bit and council does not have that opportunity this evening, the way the agenda item is written with all this in one shot. I don't think it's fair to, the council will make the decision on all these departments and all these individual little doodads, nor is it fair to the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Council. Council Steve's and then I'll go to the podium.
Partially, this is a response to what you just said, Mark. We were, when we vetted through, when we discussed this at length at GenGov, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with going through and, and dealing with these items as a lump, some per se, despite, other than the fact that we just learned about having a source of funds for some of them that were approved a long time ago. I mean, I wasn't here at the time, I, I don't know, I don't think anybody, any of us were here at the time, I don't know, you might have been, maybe, but, so that, that is concerning and that makes me wonder, how many other funds do we have out there that are just sort of sitting there collecting interest, not doing anything, that we've already, that the council as a body has already authorized to do something with, whatever that is? I don't know. I don't know if that's something that you might remember on your, from your time on council that predates mine, but, so I, I could see taking the items that are listed here for town hall and actually using that fund that Karen said, she did say she wasn't sure if it was 60 grand, so if it is 60 grand, it would cover all of those items for town hall with a little bit left over, not a whole lot. So I could see, easily see taking those out of this list and having them funded by that because even, even though the idea originally was to do windows replacement, even if it were just used for the engineering itself, we don't need to do that here. I would love to know if that's the case, if we've had this money to do this, why don't we already have an engineering study? I remember we talked about this issue with Andy at previous subcommittee meetings and if I remember correctly, he said that the, his just rough guesstimate of it would be well over $100,000 to do the repairs. So I can understand that 60 grand will cover it, but we would, by now, know what it, what would cover it if, if that money had been used the way it was voted originally to you.
Thank you, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place and a member of GenGov Committee. So I just want to bring my perspective from a couple of years ago. This was actually brought to council in a capital budget meeting where the inspector asked for $125,000, I thought it was, somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000. That was just happened in the last two years. Never did we hear about that account, however...
However, when it was brought up, I specifically said, because I'd been here a long time in the town hall with lots of other people who had been here a long time, and commented that that's not going to be enough. They've already said that you can't just get regular windows. And he was surprised. I said, I may be wrong, but I believe it has all to do with the historical perspective and whether there's, of course, asbestos, as there was at the community center, which didn't use an engineer, just used an asbestos removal company. But anyway, it's basically in the, like you say, in the caulking generally around the, but it still has to be abated properly. So I'm just, I brought that point up. You just mentioned it a little bit, Gus, but it was when I was chair of GenGov. And that was within the last two years, that it got brought as a capital item, fully vetted, very informational that the inspector brought us, and it was turned down. So it's not a surprise that there are going to be at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. That shouldn't be a surprise to anybody sitting at this dais who was here at the time.
Right, I remember that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazlo.
I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to delete the administrative car for fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars because it doesn't have to be replaced. The vehicle that is there now is still in good use. If we're going to hand it down, let's keep it at the chief's level and save the taxpayers some money.
Motion to remove the administrator vehicle. Is there a second on that? Is there a second? There is no second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazlo, I respect your point. Having been at the meeting, and I think further discussion about town line cars we could have at another date, and, but there's definitely whether it replaces the inspector's car or whatever, however the chief does it, but there is a need for another vehicle in that department. There was original request for two vehicles, and we cut it down to the one vehicle. So there was a request for two. The recommendation was for one. So your point is well taken.
I just want the taxpayers to see this in action, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, and to your point, counselor, to the taxpayer, don't think there was inaction because it was a five-hour meeting that talked about all this stuff in subcommittee. So I don't want that out there that it is not vetted because it was vetted. Counsel Steves.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars that is allocated to town hall and have the existing fund be used for those items.
So you want to reduce the allocation, the appropriation of one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, four thirty-five by?
By fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. And send the remaining to stabilization.
Come me out there with that. Take the fifty-two thousand, two forty-five.
Fifty-two thousand, two forty-five.
Fifty-two thousand, two forty-five. Would make it how much there, Madam Finance Director? Huh?
Could I just ask, while you're discussing the other items on here, did you want me to go check the balance, just so that we know for sure if there's enough to cover that much?
Okay, that would make sense.
Okay, is that all right?
Yeah, let's take a ten-minute recess because I'm sure we want to stretch.
Okay.
Thanks. Ten-minute recess. The appropriation of one million, three seventy-one, four thirty-five by fifty-two thousand, two forty-five for all the items for the town hall and have that money used to town hall improvement, a capital account. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the finance director did go down and check the town hall renovation account number six-three-nine-nine currently holds sixty-four thousand, five forty-sixty-six in it. So it would be appropriate, if the council wishes to take, reduce that and have those items covered under the town hall existing renovations capital account. So we had the amendment. So is there any further discussion on the amendment? Because I'm losing track on everything. So that would reduce, so the amendment is remove town hall engineering for window replacement in the amount of thirty thousand, town hall and economic development improvements in the amount of ten thousand, and a carpet replacement for twelve thousand, two forty-five, which totals fifty-two, two forty-five.
Right.
And the money to go to the remaining funds to go to stabilization account, correct?
Yes.
I have the new total if you like it.
Huh?
I have the new total if you like it.
I have it.
Okay, you have it, okay.
Just check, check the finance director's math, which would be a total appropriation of one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
That's what I got.
All right, so that is the amendment, so we have the amendment before us for that. Is there any further discussion on the amendment itself? Counsel DePietro?
Mr. Chair, I was seeing the amendment as about cutting some of this off. I'm wondering if I could add to the amendment or...
Well, we have his amendment, so we can vote on the amendment, and then my parliamentarian's like looking at me going, and then you could introduce another amendment.
Yes.
So...
Best way to do it.
That's the best way to do it. Okay? So, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, so now we have an amended motion, and you have a further amendment, correct, counselor? What is that?
Depending on, if I may get an answer to the question, what are the lease of the two vehicles for the school department or vehicles?
Oh, the lease of the two vehicles, I believe they're replacing two vehicles that are no longer existence, that actually were taken down from the DPW to the school department that are no longer viable and that are going to be salvaged. But we do have the school department here. Since he's here, we might as well hear from him.
Good evening. I'm here to represent the school department.
Get a talk up, Steph. Sorry.
It's okay. Good evening. So it's my pleasure to be here. So we are replacing two vehicles, one from nineteen ninety-six, one from nineteen ninety-eight, that are no longer viable. They are hand-me-downs from DPW, and they are used for our maintenance staff. We've been down two vehicles for several months now, and so these would be replacing that.
And it's a lease purchase.
If I may, Mr. Chair, what vehicles? What do they do? What are you using for?
Our tradesmen use it to aid in their work, so they're able to go to different sites and carry supplies and materials between different sites. They also use it for snow plowing.
So these are utility vehicles, pickup trucks?
They're trucks. It's for three-fifties.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, further, rather than a lease of two, I mean, you could purchase one for that kind of money.
It's a, so we did not have enough funds to purchase outright those two. So the needs of the school department this year in terms of vehicles were that these two vehicles had stopped working because they're over twenty years old. And then we also had a wheelchair van that needed to be replaced. And because we didn't have enough funding within our capital appropriation, we have to lease purchase, a three-year lease for the two maintenance vehicles, and we are buying outright the wheelchair van.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Because we eliminated the town hall in the amount of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, can we put that money someplace else, say with DPW for sidewalk repairs?
I don't mean to laugh, counselor. We had talked about that extensively at general government, Counsel Adams actually, and I had discussed it, and we had proposed doing such that because we saw a capital plan of fifty thousand dollars, and the DPW had indicated to us, and I'll let her answer for herself, I guess. I'm not going to speak for her because, go ahead. But we did try that already, counselor.
So I would say, if you are inclined to designate more funds, our largest need is in our roads. We have set up a road fund for a hundred thousand dollars this year. If you want to add to that fund, that would be the most beneficial. There is money already in a capital account to do sidewalks. We are, DPW has started to do sidewalks. We did some sidewalks this year. We can do some of that with internal forces as time allows. We have new operations manager. We have some different priorities. We're working together to try to get different items done. We can also bid out some sidewalk work with money that's already set aside. So I would rather expend those funds and have more money put aside to doing street repairs.
That makes sense.
I say let's move it to the street repairs, then.
So you want to add, what, the fifty-two, two forty-five?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of order.
Yep.
We did, the original amendment was to send it to stabilization. So we would have to reconsider it to send it to roads because the vote was actually to send it to stabilization. I have no problem with sending it to roads. I have no problem with that at all, but just for sake of formality.
Okay.
I'll move to reconsider. If you want to do it that way.
Okay. Counsel Steves moves to reconsider his earlier motion to transfer, take that money.
Two forty-five to take it out of there and put it in stabilization.
Is there a second on the reconsideration?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of reconsideration? Is that correct, counsel? Did you want discussion, counsel? Okay, so it's a reconsideration of the previous motion of fifty-two, two forty-five.
And I would like to move to send it to the road fund.
I can't hear you.
I said, and I'm going to do what you just said, is to move and take that money, the fifty-two, two forty-five, and put it in the road fund that we created, the extra hundred thousand dollars, add it to that, whatever that line item is.
All right.
Please second that.
Yeah. I'm a little confused because I think you're moving to reconsider something that you moved to stabilization, but then you have to take all the town hall items that you, because it was, that was a compounded motion that you had. You had to remove, use the existing account, and move the existing money to stabilization. So if you move to reconsider, I would, I just want to make sure I'm correct. The first motion probably should read, move to remove the town hall engineer for window replacement, town hall and economic development improvements, and carpet replacement from a fifty-two thousand, two forty-five.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And utilize?
And utilize the existing account.
Town hall renovation number six-three-nine-nine.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
All right. So is that an informal motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
I thought we already had a second, so all right.
Discussion?
Thank you.
Could you have something, Mr. Smith?
Last time, Dave Smith on Forty-Five Bridge Road, is your discussion on the amendment or on the total subject?
It's on the amendment right now.
Yeah.
So if I want to speak about the whole thing, I got to wait a little bit.
Yeah.
Just give me a minute.
Okay, I'll stand here and wait.
All right.
Sorry about the confusion.
Right. So all those in favor of removing town hall engineer for window replacement, town hall and economic development improvements, carpet replacement of fifty-two, two forty-five, and utilizing the existing town hall renovation number six-thirty-nine-nine? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay. Now, are you going to use the whole fifty-two thousand, two forty-five? Is that your motion?
You want to send that all to roads?
Yes, all to roads.
So...
We're in need of it. There's no doubt.
So motion to appropriate fifty-two thousand, two forty-five from free cash to the town, to the DPW roads improvement. Correct?
Yes.
roadway fund? Roadway fund.
Yeah, okay.
Roadway fund.
Okay, second. Discussion on that? Did I do this right, counselor? I'm thinking now. Did I do this right? I believe I did, right? All right. So all those in favor of using fifty-two, two forty-five for roadway improvement? Okay, thank you. So now, we go back to the original amount would be the one million, three seventy-one, four thirty-five.
No, no, it's one million, three nineteen. It's still one million, three nineteen, one ninety.
You just took that money out.
Yeah, that money, that money is still gone.
No? You're using the fifty-two, two forty-five for roads. The fifty-two, two forty-five is still there. You're using it for roads.
You're right.
So it's the same amount.
You're right, it is, okay.
I know a little bit to be dangerous, right, Karen? Okay. So we have the main motion with the amendments. Is there further discussion? Mr. Smith, now we're on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. First, I'm going to ask the council, please stop using the word capital budget. You did not have one this year. I don't care how many hours you guys spent at subcommittee, you still don't have one. After your votes, you're still not going to have a capital budget. Your capital budget was at the end, when you look at your big white budget book.
I got you.
The last section of the book, zero.
Your point's well taken. I would vote...
Done, that's done. Okay. I had to say this, I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I didn't say it. If you look at the highlights of capital items, or, I'll take that back. Free cash spending tonight. We're buying nine vans. We're doing a playground. After forty-eight amendments, I don't know where you're at on engineering for the windows of town hall.
That was taken out.
But can't afford to put this much pavement on a street. Same year on a budget, you're going to be voting soon to put three hundred thousand in your savings account, which is going to give us about, what, three point six million in our savings account? But we can't afford to do any pavement.
Can't afford to do any what? I can't hear you.
Any pavement on any of our roads. Now, I know you guys put a hundred thousand, and I think you just put some more in.
Yeah. Right.
Still not enough to pave one street.
I agree.
I agree.
Something's out of whack, and it's not out there, it's over here. Again, after you complete this meeting tonight with appropriations, what you're sending to your savings account, what you're appropriating, what you're borrowing, ten million dollars of capital, and we still can't do a heck of a lot of paving because we can't afford it. And if that's true, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest you disband your fire department building committee. Because if we can't put this much pavement down, we sure as hell can't afford to build a new fire station. That's the reality that's facing us today. I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you very much for that information. This council is very well aware of the fact that we don't have enough money to do roads. We're no different than any other community in this Commonwealth or this nation where they have a struggle with road repairs. It's incumbent on us of our responsibility as the leaders of this community to balance all the budgets, to make sure that we have plows to plow the roads, whether they're good or bad, to make sure that I have firefighters and police officers to respond and cruisers and fire trucks. I understand it. It's a balancing act, and you served on this council, and you know what the balancing act is. If we had enough money to go out and pave every single road in this town, we certainly would, but we don't. We could tax up to the levy limit and say, taxpayers, screw it. You want your roads fixed? We're going to tax you to the levy limit, and you pay your taxes. All right? But we need, we have sewer and water lines that were never addressed or hardly ever addressed that we're replacing, that we have to borrow money. That takes tens of millions of dollars. So we do our best as a council to balance all these needs, all right? And yes, we do need a fire station, just like any other building, just like any other thing, and we're doing our best to balance that. I welcome you to join a subcommittee this year and teach us how we can do better. Counsel Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If I could ask the DPW director how much this money is going to help her with the road repairs, if she could answer that question for me?
I think the best way to answer that question is to give you an example of what was done with a hundred thousand dollars last year. Some of you probably have gone up onto the top Some of you probably have gone up onto the top of Moore Street where we resurfaced that last year. That portion, which was maybe 2,000 feet, I might be being generous, was, that's not full depth, that was just ground down and repaved, inch and a half repavement. That was $100,000. It's very limited. So that is basically the scope of a project, of the 100 grand that's in there and additional 50, you know, maybe another half of time longer. It's very minimal what we're going to be able to do with that money, but it is a start, and I applaud that it's a start. If we accumulate money in that account, we can do bigger projects, and that's the way I would look at it.
And how much money do you have left for chapter 90?
We have chapter 90 funds, we get about a half a million dollars every year. So with the chapter 90 in that, now granted, we have chapter 90 funds that have to be designated to the bridge repairs that we're doing, the additional cost of that. So it's, there's items that are already scheduled for chapter 90. We do some preventative maintenance with chapter 90 funds, that's about $100,000 that we do with that every year. That's the crack ceiling, which has extended the life of some of our roads, which we need to do. We have to take a holistic approach of extending life, of doing grind and repave, and doing full depth reconstruction.
Thank you. I just want to say I think putting that money into the road repair account is well worth it.
Well, I, there is no doubt that, I know every single council up here has been advocating all year long for road repair improvements and how we can better, however little it is, to come up with a plan. And that's been our goal all year, is to develop plans to balance all the needs of the town, all the departments, and make it a better town. And we've done our best this year and we can do better. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, so the main motion, I believe, do you want me to list all the items again, or are you good? I'll just highlight the changes. Vote to appropriate 1,371,435 from free cash for the FY 2020 capital budget. The additions are central dispatch console for $60,000. Change in the recreation replacement of Henry Street Playground, that no funds will be expended without a plan presented to council and council approval. The elimination of the town hall accounts of engineering for window replacement, town hall and economic development improvements, carpet replacement for 52, 245, and that money will be replaced and put into a roadway improvement account for 52, 245, with a total of 1,371,435. Any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Item 16. That item's been reduced. Do you want, offer an amendment or just go ahead and read it? So it would be vote to appropriate $240,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
So second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve's?
Given the fact that we were just talking about roads a few minutes ago, and I thought, I kind of mentioned this at Gen Gov and we kind of decided not to do anything with it. But I would love to actually make that 140 grand into stabilization and the other 100 grand into the road fund.
You could have done it above, but, okay.
Well, now, the problem is now we're doing it to stabilization, so. Because that's where we're dealing with. Rose, I could have done it above there, yeah.
Is there a second on that? Second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Daniel, second? So the amendment is to vote to appropriate 140,000 from free cash to stabilization and $100,000 to the roadway improvement account. Further, any- Any further discussion on the amendment?
Thank you. Mr. Chair. So we're going to add another $100,000 to the roadway out of the stabilization?
What I, that's what I-
That's what my-
That's his recommendation. We have a very long backlog of roads work that needs to be done.
No, I understand, I understand.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say this, my concern is, since August last year when I was elected in, became a council member in July and August, I sat down with the town manager, DPW director, and we discussed a roadway plan. We received a grant to do the study on the roads. I know about, I interviewed about the 2012 plan, I already saw that, but now we're doing a plan to look at the roads again, and hopefully we can continue that review every single year. And I think it's about $5,000 to renew that, be off 1,000 or so. So, you know, sitting down with the town manager, we talked about 50 to 100,000. We started somewhere, I got it, we don't have 12 to 20 million dollars to redo all the roads in this town. I do, I appreciate the extra $52,000 into the 100,000, that's great. And I do appreciate the offer of another $100,000 into it. But my concern here is, this year we're going to be looking at DPW, school facilities and maintenance, and, you know, with the personnel that we need to hopefully build up the DPW and the schools to help each other out a little bit. My concern, I bring this to the town manager or Karen, if we took another $100,000 out of that $240,000, what does that do to us? I mean, obviously this is going to stabilization, we try to keep it within a certain amount per year. What I don't want to do is put, you know, jeopardy into the town, just keep it stable. So I have a question for the town manager or the town accountant.
Mr. Manager?
Through you, and I think we'll probably both want to address this one, to be honest with you. We've worked hard over the last four years to build up the stabilization fund. We did that because it shows financial stability to the town. As we've discussed repeatedly, the importance of this is that bond rating companies look at our stabilization fund. DOR looks at our stabilization, frankly, everybody that's interested in the finances of the town looks at that stabilization fund when they think about things like giving us credit. We've really worked hard at that, and we're finally, we're not way above average, but we're finally at a point where it's reasonable. This has been a, I laugh and I joke with her, but Karen, who's our finance director, has made this a really important issue, she feels very strongly about continuing to build up stabilization to protect the long-term security of the community in terms of its finances. So that's the argument we've been made, I think we've tried to make that argument strongly. We feel it's really, really important. I don't know if Karen wants to add to what I'm saying, but I know this issue because she's driven it home to me on so many occasions that I understand it pretty well. I think it's a mistake, I think, I, listen, I created the road fund for purposes of, I think, all the councils saying to me that roads are an important issue, and I think the people of Southwood should recognize that town councils believe that roads are an important issue. But, you know, also the stability of the town's finances is also critical. So it's, it is a balancing act. I think we've made a great start on the roads, the intention is to add 100 grand to our budget every year till we get to the point of an additional $500,000 a year. I think it's a good plan, I think we should stick with it.
Counselor Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm thrilled at the suggestion of the amendment. And again, I would recommend to incoming council, every two grand, three grand, four grand, you chisel away from every item that comes to you and you make your department heads sharpen their pencil a little bit. Throw it towards the roads. Throw it, two grand here, three grand there, four grand there. After six months, you'll have your 100,000, you'll have another couple 100,000, sooner or later, you're going to have a million dollars in there within a year, two years, if everyone puts their mind to it on council, just a little bit at a time. And if you want to talk about infrastructure of the town, advertising of the town, bringing business into the town, proper roads besides safety, convenience to the citizens, and trying to get new business in here, trying to get folks that when they pull into town and they're not running over potholes, and this should be a little secret account. Stow it, stow it, stow it, to get it there. Grab a little bit here, grab a little bit there, and all of a sudden you say, hey, we got a million dollars, go fix something. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I have Counselor Steve's, then Adams, then Lazo.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on what Ron was saying, I just want to make it clear, I have, I'm not interested in it. I don't want to cut stabilization, okay? I'm just saying that we have all of these issues, and I understand that obviously we do need a good, stable account. I understand all of what you just said, I completely agree with it. I just want to point out that some of that, I think that we have the opportunity to do this now. The free cash will, if, I mean, either it will go to stabilization or it will go to the roads. Otherwise it will just fall back to free cash and we won't be able to do anything with it for six months, basically. So I think if we do it now, we'll have a chance to maybe do something a little extra this year since now's the time to fund the roads, for this year anyway. And they're going to, she's doing the work now, starting to do the organization of the stuff that needs to get done this year. And I think it'd be a good opportunity to take this and, I realize it's not 500,000 or an extra million, which we really could use, but it'll help a little. And that's, that's why I'd like to see it done.
Counsel Adams?
So I, thank you, Mr. Chair, my concern here is keeping the town stable with the minimum funds that we do have. Now, there are, we have a lot of things coming in front of us here in the next few months. Adult use of marijuana is going to be on one of the agenda items to possibly repeal it. If it passes, based on what the townspeople spoke in June, that some of that money should go to infrastructure, should go to police, should go to- My only concern is, just because it's in front of us, that's not a plan, just to throw it out there. So my concern is, if we, if we just kept it in stabilization, it takes a two-thirds vote to pull it out, correct? So why don't we look at that, keep it in stabilization, see how we're going about it, see how the year is going. I'm all about, if I could win the lottery, I'd give the $20 million. If I, if I had, if I had $20 million. All right, so I have Texas. All right, if I win that lottery. But I just want to be, we got to, we got to be smart about it too at the same time. We have a plan for the roads, we're working on quite a few things this year coming up. If we really need that money and the DPW director and the town manager and whoever that made the chair and vice, they come in and say, we really need to take a look at this, then let's take a look at this. But I, I just don't want to just take it out, just start throwing money around it as we go along. Though I agree, I wish I had $20 million to do the roads, we could do that. But that's all I have to say at this point.
Counsel Lazo?
No matter what subject we talk about, no matter what project we hope to get done, until you make the roads the priority, they're not going to get done.
Exactly.
I would suggest, look, you keep talking minimum money, minimum money. How about next budget, we cut the schools to minimum school expenditure, like it was forever, and it worked back then? And take that money and put it into roads, if that's the priority. You can do that. But if you want to keep pouring it into other things and trying to do a balancing act, and I get it. Everybody needs what they need. Until the roads are the priority, and I understand planning and development of it, to get it, we've done a lot of plans in the past. Drive down the roads, make the list and fix the streets. It doesn't take an engineer to tell you in front of Russell Harrington, Main Street, you know, ride around, West Street. Pick them. I live on the West Street and South Bridge, Ellis Road. Ride around, when your potholes is deep, hey, I think we got to fix that. Again, common sense, make it the priority and you'll get it done.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I respect what Counselor Steve's is trying to do, I respect what everyone else up here is saying. A question came up at General Government when we were talking about the DPW and projects and whatnot. And there are projects that are on hold, and there was supposed to be a meeting to see what projects were on hold, how much money was being held up. So perhaps we could look at that, take a look at that, and perhaps find money in there somewhere to put more money into the roadway fund. I mean, that's all, thank you.
No, you're, I think you are correct, we did talk about that. I'm sure that's what my fellow council is going to state, so I'll defer to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wholeheartedly agree. We should have something next month on capital improvement plans or projects that are happening right now, where, what's working and what's not working, what's paid for, what's not paid for. You know, even when we were talking about this, but, General Gov, I was wanting to give DPW $50,000 for sidewalks. It's the small things out there, they start seeing it work, but the staffing issues and stuff like that. So we, I'm all about, you know, come to find out they had $35,000 left over from this year, that hadn't even been touched. So I want to look at the capital improvement projects, you know, not last year, but the year before, and see where this money is at and, you know, kind of decide it, and you're right. I think if there's any funds that are available, we can decide as a council what we'd like to do with those, you know? It's only fair to the people, and I agree with Counselor Lazo about the getting stuff done and having a plan and projects and schools and roads and, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but it's tough right now.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Just, just one more comment, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you can reflect to this, we did it together. When we couldn't afford an electrical contractor, at a $300,000 a year, to a local electrical contractor, school district went out and got an electrician, it was cheaper to have an electrician. So for myself, with the boilers and everything, we created a building maintenance department in school district, which works great. On the DPW side, in the back of my mind, would always, some of the other towns do their own pavements, some of the towns do their own sidewalks. I think in the upcoming year, I'd like to get on the DPW subcommittee and look at in-house, what can we do? If you don't have the manpower, don't pull work on a department that doesn't have the manpower nor the equipment.
Sure.
If you're going to do a move on roads and sidewalks and it's going to be something in-house, it has to be a manpower slash equipment. But again, it has to be research and look into, I know that, you know, we have tons of things to do itself. But I got to tell you, the roads, I drive in the other towns, they're not as bad as our town. I work at Charlton, Dudley, Webster, I drive on the roads. We are a substandard roadway in all, in all aspects. It has to become the priority, thank you.
So we have, I just want to weigh in on, I appreciate Counselor Adams' tact of, you know, if we put it in stabilization, we do have the opportunity to move it out. And I wouldn't be opposed to move it, going at a later date. I think we do have to have a meeting with DPW just to say, before we give them another 100,000, the 52 is great, but before we give another 100,000, let's have a meeting and say, could you give us a list of what projects you have, what chapter 90s, where we're at on the plan, and then strategically say, instead of just saying, here's $100,000, let's strategically prioritize what road, if we give you 100,000 or 200,000, whatever, I don't, Karen would kill me because, but what priority could we attack and do that?
Mr. Chairman, it's the council's job to prioritize which road gets paved. After the information is in, we prioritize, at least that's the way it always was before.
I would, I would respectfully agree and disagree that we have expert in the DPW that have applied for chapter 90 money, put that out to the state. Yes, bring it to us, and then it is up to the council, if we have, to say where it's going to go. But it's a joint thing, it's not just-
The tail of a wagged dog.
Excuse me, I'm talking to Counsel Lazo. It is up to us to prioritize and lead, and, but I think we need the information and just throwing $100,000 to a department without any other backup is not good fiscal responsibility right now. So I would say, let's just put the brakes on this line item and come back, DPW, whoever wants to be on DPW, and make it a priority. It's been Counselor Adams' priority all year with roads, and that's why we got $100,000 into the operating budget. So let's continue that momentum, but let's do it smart. Counsel Adams? Mr. Chair, move the question.
Second.
All those in favor of moving the question? So the question before us is just the amendment?
Yeah.
Which is, vote to appropriate $140,000 to the roadway account. Let me finish, because we have 240 here. That was the original. The amendment is appropriate 140 to roadways and $100,000 to stabilization.
No, I said the other way around, 100,000 to roads and 140,000 to stabilization.
Okay, I thought, I had it written down as 100,000, but-
No, it was 140,000 to stabilization.
140 to stabilization?
And 100.
And 100,000 to roads.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed?
Oh, I meant to be opposed, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll say this again. So the, it's vote to appro- So the, it's vote to appropriate one hundred and forty thousand dollars to stabilization and one hundred thou- and the remaining hundred thousand dollars to go to the roads.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the amendment.
Yes.
All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? The amendment does not carry. The main motion remains, vote to appropriate two hundred and forty thousand dollars from free cash to stabilization. Is there any further discussion on that? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Okay. Vote to appropriate three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars from water retained earnings for the FY twenty twenty capital budget as follows. Main Street valve replacement project, three hundred and fifty thousand. Cybersecurity upgrades, thirty-six thousand. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I ask you to ask the audience to, I'm having a hard time hearing up here.
Okay.
I'm just like getting it all back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I could beg your indulgence a lot, if I could be excused as I'm traveling this evening?
Certainly, yep.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all your service on council, council.
Thank you very much.
Vote to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand from sewer retained earnings for the FY twenty twenty capital budget as follows. Collection system TV truck swap and new TV camera system.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item nineteen, ordered that three million dollars is appropriated to South Street transmission main replacement and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow three million dollars under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, therefore, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of project costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just for the public, we did vet these all out at a general government subcommittee extensively, so we're not just going through millions of dollars haphazardly. Ordered that five hundred and fifteen thousand is appropriated to the East Main Street water main replacement and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow five hundred and fifteen thousand under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, any premium received by the town upon the sale of such, of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes be applied to the payment of project costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-one, ordered that eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is appropriated to sewer pump station's rehabilitation work and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow eight hundred and twenty-five thousand under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of project costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-two, ordered that four hundred thousand dollars appropriated to sewer headworks improvements and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow four hundred thousand under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, any premium received by the town upon sale of bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of project costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-three, ordered that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is appropriated to replace filter sand and make repairs to sewer filter bed project and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow one hundred and seventy-five thousand under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this note, vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of project costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Twenty-four, ordered that two million dollars is appropriated to the sewer inflow infiltration repairs project and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow two million dollars under chapter forty-four of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes thereof, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of project costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Late hour. Okay. Item twenty-five, presentation of the Town Council evaluation summary of the Town Manager for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen as prepared by the council chair and vote to accept. Take the motion to accept afterwards. So, one of the hardest things I think for any public body to do is to do an evaluation of a public employee because the performance evaluation needs to be done in public, so So, just as a outline of, of this. Per the Town Manager's contract stated, the council shall review and evaluate the Town Manager honor before June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for FY, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty twenty for FY twenty. Said review and evaluation shall be based on the goals and objectives developed by the council and Town Manager. Further, the council chairperson shall provide the Town Manager with a written summary of evaluation findings and shall provide an adequate opportunity for him to discuss his evaluation with the council. The chairman's summary evaluation shall be a public record and each individual council's men's evaluation shall be part of the Town Manager's personnel file, subject to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-three E, the open meeting law. B, said review shall be conducted using the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Document established by the council, amended from time to time as necessary and attached as Appendix A of this agreement. Just to outline on the process, the evaluation instrument was developed by the Town Council on May twenty-second, two thousand, oh, no, was, was approved by the council in March. On May twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, I distributed the evaluation instrument with documentation to the Town Council. It was requested that the councils complete this evaluation, return it directly to, to me, the chairman, by June tenth, two thousand and nineteen. The chairman complied, compiled the information and tabulated the final composite score based on the individual Town Council scores. The chairman drafted a summary report based on the common themes of the written comments of individual councilors. As chairman, I reviewed the written summary only with the vice chairman, Gus Steves, on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. The individual evaluations are not being used this evening and will not be distributed or shared between councilors as they are part of the Town Manager's personnel folder, and this is negotiated in the contract, as well as the guidance provided by legal counsel, Merrick O'Connell. That legal counsel was a pro bono information that was sent out to the Mass Municipal Association parties that I also distributed to council. In part, what it said was, in summary, based on the Attorney General's determination, evaluations completed by individual board members as compared to the chair's composite document do not need to be released as long as such individual evaluations have not been used in open session and are not subject to public records requests if filed in the manager's personnel folder. So none of the evaluation, individual evaluations were shared with councilors, they have remained in my presence and will be transmitted to the Human Resources Department to be placed in the evalu- in the manager's personnel folder. So as an outline, the letter, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, to Ron Sanangelo, Town Manager, Town of Southbridge, forty-one Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass. Dear Ron, I am pleased to provide you with a summary of your evaluation completed by the council for the period of July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. As you know, Town Councils were to submit their completed evaluations with any written comments to me so that I could prepare a summary of the evaluations as well as a final overall score and rating. All seven members of the current sitting council completed their evaluation, included some level of written comment. And we are a council of nine, however, we only had seven active members because of two resignations. This evaluation encompassed your progress toward the Town Manager's goals and objectives that were developed this year between you and the Town Council, as well as observed job performance traits or standards. The evaluation was conducted using the Town of Southbridge Evaluation Packet for the Town Manager for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, as approved by the Town Council on March sixth, two thousand and nineteen. This tool included as appendix, is included as Appendix A in your employment agreement two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. The Town Council Evaluation Instrument measures your performance in six key areas: knowledge, skill, dependability, communications, core qualities, leadership management, and financial acumen. There were several councilors that submitted written comments in these areas and outlined some of their failings regarding the traits that they had observed during the past year. The rating scale on this section is zero, unsatisfactory, one needs improvement, two meets expectations, and three, performance surpassing reasonable expectations. There were no councilors that rated you as failing to beat basic expectations in this section, and there was one council who rated you as surpassing expectations in the communications section. The average score in these six areas were as follows: knowledge, skill, one point three five, dependability, one point five, communications, two point two one, core qualities, one point four two, leadership and management, one point six four, and financial acumen, one point seven one. As noted above, there were several councilors that had submitted comments and a summary of those statements are as follows. In the area of knowledge and skill, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has a general knowledge of the essential aspects of his position. However, there has been a lack of organization as well as planning and strategy on the Town Manager's part. The council has had to take the lead on several of the issues that face the town, including the lack of sufficient personnel in the fire and police department and conditions of the roads. The Town Manager continues to struggle with the provision of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter. There have been instances where he has not followed the charter, and this had had a direct effect on the ability of the Town Council to fulfill their obligations as defined in the charter. One of the specific examples is related to the budget process and the failure to provide capital expenditures for the ensuing year. The charter is clear that capital expenditures should have been submitted as part of the budget message. The failure of providing the capital plan in a timely manner resulted in the Town Council not being able to fulfill its obligations under the charter, where we are to have a public hearing prior to the end of the eleventh month. The Town Manager has a general sense of procurement practices, however, as the chief procurement officer of the Town of Southbridge, there needs to be a better understanding of chapter thirty B and the provisions in the law. Dependability. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo does attend various subcommittee meetings as required in his contract. There have been times where he comes in just prior to or right as the meeting has started, and on several occasion has not been prepared for the meeting. As the chief administrative officer of the town, the council looks to the Town Manager for recommendations, and while it is okay to delegate to subordinates and to defer to their expertise, the Town Manager needs to be better prepared and have a better understanding of the proposals that are being presented. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has a general knowledge of applicable laws as well as some of the town procedures and guidelines. In communications, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has very good communication skills and does disseminate information to the public and the Town Council. He has made good use of the local access channel as well as social media. There were several councilors that rated his performance relative to substance abuse as going beyond expectation, and it is noted that this program is a very personal project. The Town Manager has engaged the community and stakeholders in the Substance Abuse Advisory Committee and has delivered many programs to our community as we battle the opioid epidemic. This is an area where the Town Manager is very strong and where the Town Council hear comments from public quite often. Core qualities. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has sought solutions to problems by applying for grants to have studies done on the following: DPW School Department Study, Town Facilities Plan, Pavement Plan, as well as the School Facility Plan. It is commendable that the Town Manager has sought these grants and studies, however, there's been no follow-up analysis or strategic plans presented to the Town Council to address these findings. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has been open to the council's desire to create the hiring process for firefighters, as well as the promotion process for officers in the Fire Department. There are several instances where the Town Manager has taken responsibility for actions, but at times tends to place blame with others, as well as past Town Council members. As the chief administrative officer of the town, it is his responsibility to make sure the mission is accomplished and to accept accountability for issues and not lay blame with others. Leadership and management. Town Manager Ron Sanangelo is the chief administrative officer of the town and has a very good leadership team within his departments. It is evident that many activities and projects are properly delegated to his subordinates. However, it has been apparent that this reliance on his employees has resulted in the Town Manager not being prepared to articulate the plan or to resolve issues that may appear in these projects. This has been evident on several presentations such as the Rail Trail Project, Munis Project, and Central Dispatch Project. The issue with staffing on the Fire Department is a concern. While it is great to be able to trust your department heads, you must also trust but verify the information that is being presented to you. As the chief administrative officer, there needs to be a clearer understanding of the final product as the Town Council relies heavily on the Town Manager's input and recommendations. The Town Manager does seek out residents to serve on board and commissions and overall does a satisfactory job in overseeing town functions. In financial acumen, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo has been a true advocate as to having a healthy budget and to make sure that the town operates within appropriation. There is an adequate reserve in case of emergency, and he has been clear in maintaining those reserves. The town council commends the town manager for his handling of the oped issues, and we look forward to more proposals and creative ways to fund this obligation that has been forced upon towns. There has been instances this past year where there has been an unawareness of changes in Bay Path budget, return funds to the town as the fact that they were getting money for the state, for the dispatch center, or the Latino citizens. The town manager needs to do a better job of watching the budget process and following changes as proposed by the legislature. This evaluation is also comprised of the performance measured against the goals and objectives that were agreed upon this past year between the town manager and the town council. There are five major areas of emphasis for the past year: fiscal management, infrastructure and asset management, communications, economic management, and strategic planning. The town council set dates as when these goals and objectives were to be met and set points, a point scale to measure the results of the performance. The scale was as follows: zero, not done; one, incomplete progress toward goal; two, complete based on expectations; and three, completed beyond expectations. There was substantial work completed by the town manager on the goals and objectives, and we received continued updates and documentation as to the progress towards their completion. The town council is aware of the fact that many of these items are ongoing and that continued work is needed. We look forward to working with the town manager over the next two months as we develop the goals and objectives for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. The goals and objectives and performance standard scores were computed to provide for a final score and overall rating. Based on the evaluations completed by the councilors, the overall rating was computed for each separate evaluation. The result for each evaluation is as follows: Adams, seventy-six point six seven; Daniel, seventy-three point three four; DePietro, sixty point three four; Jovan, seventy-one point three four; Manna, sixty-one point four zero; Nash, eighty-eight point three zero; Steves, fifty-four point seven zero, which computes to an average of sixty-nine point four four. The town manager's overall performance score again was computed by averaging the several scores and resulted in a final score of sixty-nine point four four. This placed on the scale places the overall performance expectation as needs improvement. The public evaluation will be presented tonight, and the town council looks forward to meeting with you and discussing these results as we develop the goals and objectives for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Also attached to that, a copy of the core, the six areas to show that where we, everybody was, and it was a pretty consistent across the board. So, that is the evaluation portion. Of course, I know it's a lot to digest this evening, and you'll have the opportunity to review the individual evaluations, and we could certainly set a date to meet, again, because it is late this evening, to discuss those with you, the overall composite evaluation. And I would welcome any individual counselor to set meetings with you to discuss individual evaluations. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm missing a page because I don't have everything you gave me. So, you read a lot more than I have, so I don't know if it's...
It was copied, it was copied by your office, so.
This was a page, actually.
All right, so, if you, well, if we could, could we copy that? Well, is there anything you want to copy before that?
Well, I'm not sure the whole thing. I mean, I kind of tried to follow your reading, I was kind of puzzled, so I'm not sure if it's one page or two pages.
I don't know how it...
I've got this page, though.
I don't know how it went, it went through your copy.
Can you make us copies for whoever, please?
I had your office copy it for me.
I'll open my door, and if you want to give it to one of the staff members or something, just copy it.
We'll take a quick five-minute recess while we get those copies. Reconvene? Okay. So, any comments from councilors or...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll set up a time with the town manager.
Okay. Anything you want to say tonight, Mr. Manager?
Well, I guess I just want to say this, and really, I guess it's kind of really not directed at the town council. But in terms of the goals and objectives, I want to thank my team who worked really hard with me to provide the information the council requested. As always, I think the employees that I work for do an awesome job in putting together information. It was our goal, in the end, when we heard, when I got the goals and objectives, to give you more information than I thought was needed as my discussions when the goals and objectives were put together. I'm proud of the accomplishments, not only of this past year, but of the almost four years that I've been here. We've had a remarkable turnaround in terms of the town's finances, and I think when, and one of the biggest issues, when citizens don't even really see the impact of the landfill closing, I think is a huge accomplishment. It had nowhere near the impact that people thought it was going to have because of the work of my whole team in making sure that occurred. We lost a lot of money from the landfill, and a recent rating from Standard and Poor's on our bond, they talked very heavily about the great fiscal management of this town and how they thought we were doing a great job. I shared that with town council. You know, I thought in many ways that the council and I have worked very hard together to achieve a lot of different things. In spite of the concerns about our budget, in the last number of years, we've essentially, including the issue of budget, hired four new police officers to improve the quality of the police department. I will admit that I wasn't a big supporter of adding four more additional firemen under safer grant, but I did to support the council's efforts to do that. We've seen a complete improvement in the town hall staff. We've hired well over a hundred people in the last four years, and I'm extremely proud of the team that we put together. And I love the fact that I hear council members talking about the great team we have, because that's very, very true. I do delegate responsibility to these professionals because I think that they are just that, they're very good professionals. They work extremely hard, and I'm proud to work with all of them and have a great deal of respect for the work. I note that this document says that I need improvement. I've never claimed to be perfect, and I'm more than happy to work with councilors on any given issue. I've tried to do my best to listen to your concerns. I'm also very proud that in the four years I've been here, the council has almost supported the issues that I put on the agenda by, I would say, damn near a ninety-nine percent ratio. I mean, they have supported almost unanimously everything that we put together. This budget, in fact, up until tonight, the only changes that were made to were to increase my budget. None of the items in the budget that we put forward were cut. As a matter of fact, the council supported everything we brought forward as a team. And again, I'm not taking credit because it's not just my efforts. I have a great team, and they do great work. So, you know, I listen and appreciate the comments made by each of the council members and the documents given me tonight, and I, of course, will work harder to meet your goals and objectives. I have treated every member of this council with respect at all times, in spite of the fact that people like me or don't like me. Truthfully, I didn't come here to be liked or disliked. I came here to do a job, and I feel very effectively that we've done a great job. And what is proof of that is the turnaround financially of this town. When I came here, I'm going to be very clear, I sat in the audience the very first night before I actually came in, and this town was doing a zero tax increase and borrowing a million dollars for capital items because we had no capital money. I was told there was no money to do any kind of capital projects, yet in the last three years, because of the fiscal changes we've made, we spent over a million dollars a year in purchasing capital equipment with no interest because we didn't have to borrow a dime. So, in the last four years for all our capital projects that came out of free cash, it was no borrowing. Now, there is some borrowing on some larger sewer projects and stuff. I'm proud of the accomplishments, and I respect the council, and I look forward to work with them. I'd love to sit down and hear individual views from councilors, what they think. I will take and appreciate any recommendations they think that are valuable to me, and I will do the best to do everything I can to improve. I frankly want to have a positive working relationship with every single counselor, and I'm going to continue to do my best to do that. I try to be fair, I try to be equal to each individual council member. I just learned about this evaluation tonight, so it really hasn't sunk in in terms of the details, but I will say that no matter what individual evaluation I get, I'm very proud of the accomplishments of this administration, regardless of what anybody says, because I know, and I could do a long list of accomplishments of my team, and they deserve a hell of a lot of credit. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave my comments at that for this evening.
Thank you. And, of course, it is this council's desire to work closely with you. I think the council itself had worked very hard to develop concrete goals and objectives in concert with you, as well as those individual traits. And I think as you find time and review the individual evaluations, as well as the composite evaluations, you know, it's striking that out of a seven-member board, six members rated your performance as a needs improvement. So, that in itself, I think, is part of a reflection as you review your evaluations as to what councilors have seen this year. And, albeit, there's three of us that are brand-new, had the opportunity to work with you, and I think there are times that, yes, we do get frustrated. I know me specifically, and I'll leave that for you to review the individual evaluation, but I think there is, there's always, I think this is the hardest part in public life, is the public evaluation when you convey a message that may not be what you expect, and you have to take that and self-reflect. But this council will work with you when you come back to sit down and talk about how we move forward, how we develop concrete goals and objectives and improvement plans, and some self-reflection on both parts. Does any other councils have anything to say? With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the chairman's summary evaluations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on accepting that? Roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
I think...
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. And, what do we have? Next meeting? Oh, council's former, I'm sorry. Counsel Lazo?
No comment.
Counsel Daniel?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
I've got a whole list, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'll make it for these two over here, all right. I want to thank the DPW.
Doors lock at eleven, just so you know. We've got six minutes.
Well, then, I'll take up five and a half. All right, so, thank you to the DPW, trimming the trees on Main Street so quickly, putting the American flags up, putting the American flags up and trimming the trees, I really appreciate that, all the work that they are doing out there in the heat, and again, appreciate it. I had the opportunity to sit with the fire department for about three and a half hours. I got to ride in multiple vehicles. I thought I was actually going to a rescue, but they just put me in the rescue truck. So, but it was good to listen to them and roll up the hoses and do whatever, just have a nice conversation about the fire department and the town. We, a lot of things happened this evening, but, you know, a lot of this stuff, the disagreements or the conversations usually happen at a subcommittee level, and unfortunately, because of events that had happened, we weren't able to do it. But this is exactly what happens. A lot of nights, there's discussion and disagreements, but, you know, professionally, I think we handled it well, it's just a long evening. So, I want to thank all the councilors and the town manager and the department heads for sticking around and listening to us jabber.